Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 at 7:00 PM. I'm the overall Councilman Donald.
Yeah.
Councilmember Long is absent. Councilmember Van Delle.
Present.
Vice President Van Delle.
Present.
President Moore.
Present.
If the record indicates the presence of Acting City Manager Robert Exlesy, Assistant Corporation Council Greg Kandinsky, and officers in the class.
Please tell the members of the city this evening.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, as we begin the meeting. Good evening to everyone. We want to have some special remarks tonight by Councilman Van Delle. He will just share the information with you at this time.
Good evening, everybody. Before we begin, I just wanted to make some brief remarks about an individual named Joe Carroll. He was a very special person for the Long Beach community. For those of you who didn't get the pleasure of the opportunity to meet him, if you've been reading a little bit about him, unfortunately, we suddenly in tragic loss of him last year. Joe grew up in Long Beach. He was a volunteer firefighter a year before. He joined the Navy and served our country with distinction. He then returned to Long Beach where he, well, actually, he went to Florida where he was a professional firefighter, then returned to Long Beach. Anyone, everyone who knew Joe, that Joe was there in a heartbeat, whether you had an issue with plumbing, heating, even just, you need somebody to talk to, Joe was always there. Joe was a licensed pilot. He was also a mason, having served as a past master at the Long Beach Lodge. He continued to serve our city with capacity of a volunteer when he was ordered released, licensed as a rank of sergeant. Joe truly personified what it means to have Long Beach sand in your shoes and what it means to get back to community. He's really going to be there. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And our thoughts of presenting go out to his entire family, as well as to our Long Beach police auxiliary family as well. At this time, we'll have a report from the Acting City Manager.
Just very good, thank you. President Moore, just very quickly, as the city continues to track Hurricane Dory, remind you that September marks national preparedness month. I'd like to take this matter, remind everyone to prepare themselves and families for all types of emergencies to learn more on how to prepare for natural disasters. Please attend the New York State Citizen Preparedness Court meeting at the Long Beach Library on September 28th at 11:00 AM. Each family that attends will receive one preparedness start. Registration is required at www.repair.nycorps.edu/. You can also visit www.longbeachny.com/eldery for emergency notifications on preparedness information. Thanks.
All right. That brings us right to our city council report. First, once again, we just want to emphasize that transparency remains a priority for our city council. We received the budget totals with respect to our beach revenue for the weekend total. Our totals through the weekend of September 2nd, the total sales at present are $4 million 322,030 and $46 cents. And we have this information available to you. If you, again, need that information, you can see our City Clerk at the end of this meeting. We want to make sure that you have this information. We also would like to let you know that a work session has been rescheduled for Tuesday, September 24th at 6:30 PM. All members of the community are encouraged to attend. Please be aware that this work session will not include public comment. However, the session will be live streamed, and the session will provide departmental and unit reports to shape our future agenda and provide sound decision-making. We thank you for your patience in advance. Last meeting, I shared with you that the Open Gov creates reports to educate the public about the city's finances. The platform actually helps to establish goals for departments, programs, or initiatives, and then tracks them while simultaneously keeping the residents updated on spending, performance, and progress. The demonstration for Socrata is being held later this week. The city administration will participate, and the council will also participate on a smaller level to review the demo once it becomes available. Our network specialists Jamie Roman and City Clerk Dave Fraser have explored several platforms, including the Tri-Allen Finance and Open Gov. We will keep all of you, the residents, updated. On behalf of the city council, we express our sincere appreciation to our lifeguards, our beach patrol, our beach maintenance, our Long Beach Police Department, our Long Beach Fire Department, our Long Beach professional firefighters, and the Long Beach Auxiliary Police for going above and beyond duty to make Summer 2019 a safe and enjoyable one for us all. Can we please applaud them? Congratulations to the, once again, police officers Ray Kramer and Lucas Decratus for saving the life of a young beach resident. On Sunday, August 19th, approximately 1:12 AM, the Long Beach Police Department received a 911 call from a busy swimmer in the vicinity of Maryland Avenue and the Ocean Beach Park. Her arrival, the officers called with a complaint and stated that her friend got into the water with full intention of committing suicide. Police officers Kramer and Decratus were challenged with extremely poor weather conditions, poor visibility, heavy fog, and poor lighting. However, these two heroes, our Long Beach heroes, were able to rescue this young lady and not only do that, pull her from the water, but also she was transported to the Napster University Medical Center for evaluation. Our city is proud of our officers. We presented them with citations earlier today on behalf of the council. I also would like to point out that the Long Island Crisis Center, a non-for-profit private agency, was also present. And many of you are aware of the fact that the Long Island Crisis Center actually holds an annual law to prevent suicide every year. That one will be held on Sunday, September 15th, right at the Laurelton Boulevard at 10:00, 10:30 AM. I want to just take the time to remind everyone that depression and other forms of trauma are not always recognizable. In the near future, is my hope that we can engage our city organizations, as well as our mental health professionals that are right here in the city of Long Beach, to begin a citywide initiative to address mental health. Again, our neighbors and our friends are silently suffering, and we must do all that we can. As I conclude my report, our last meeting, I urged the Natalie and DA Singus to conclude their investigation with respect to their overview of the payout without fear or special favor. The audit review released by the Controller last Thursday is disturbing warrants council action. In the spirit of transparency, the council majority has retained outside legal counsel that solely reports to the city council to provide unfiltered legal advice. Outside counsel is currently reviewing the control report and the DA's letters. Moreover, outside counsel will review and draft the appropriate resolutions to take the necessary steps for corrective action. The city council majority recognized that this is a law against process. It is important for everyone to understand that all issues related to this report must be addressed from a legal perspective to protect you, our residents, from future liability. We will update as soon as possible on this critical issue, and that concludes my report.
First item this evening is a public hearing for bond awards and financing for improvements in parkless water treatment. The client stating the estimated total cost thereof is $800,000, appropriated set amount for such purpose and authorizing the issuance of $800,000 bonds to finance said appropriation and the expenditure of city water rate charges and up to $800,000 grant funds expected to receive from the state of New York to be expended towards the cost of said object or purpose or redemption of the city's obligations issued therefore, or to be budgeted as an offset to taxes for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds.
All right, at this time, we're going to open our hearing. Unfortunately, we're tabled during our last meeting, and at this time, the floor will be called. The opportunity to have attention to our Commissioner on the verge, John Moranda.
Thank you. Under the Safe Creek Water Act, after 9/11, each water system was required to do a vulnerability assessment. One of the items that came up in our vulnerability assessment is part of our treatment train where we set iron out, our open air basins, so they're open to the atmosphere. And one of the recommendations in that vulnerability assessment was to cover those basins. We contracted H2M to do a study on this project, and they came up with six alternates ranging in course from $70,000 to $2 million. $2 million being a complete enclosure around the facility, and $70,000 being floating membranes on top of the water. Each one of these items was rated on security, operator safety, destructibility, lifespan, cover maintenance, impact on operations, cost, aesthetics, and we give it a total score. The highest ranking obviously was the $2 million project at 54 points. The next highest rating was for a retractable fabric cover at 52 points. After reviewing all this, we felt that it was in the best interest of the city in terms of safety and security to go with the retractable fabric at $800,000. This would be an item that will be in next year's capital budget, but we have an opportunity with some political support from the state politicians to help us get a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant, which would pay for 60% of this. So we need to approve this fine because the grant applications due on September 13th.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions from the council? Questions? Okay, seeing none, now we'll open up the floor to the public. I recognize Senator Todd Kandinsky. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Nice to be here tonight. I want to lend the support of my office and the Senate majority in whatever way we can to help the city get as much state money as possible for clean water infrastructure. This has been a priority of the state of New York for the last few years. As you can imagine, many municipalities throughout our state are aging water infrastructure. Long Beach, though, certainly has particular issues, and unfortunately, I think the buck has been passed a little bit too long in this community. We have a 100-year-old water tower. It's about time we do something about that. There are two options that I think we should bail ourselves off, and that I think Commissioner Morando just mentioned, and we're going to work together on. One is to get grants, just simple state money through the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. We are already working with people at the Senate Finance Office to facilitate that. And second, you could apply for state financing through the Environmental Facilities Corporation to have the money loaned from the state at a very favorable rate. We are going to work as hard as we can to achieve these goals and make sure that, go a cover, we have the proper water infrastructure in our city. And there's no reason why the city can't be, or is sitting at millions of dollars in state aid as a result of this, whether it's in one year or over a period of years. But I'm very confident that we have the exact type of projects that are meant for this type of funding, that we can achieve the funding. We just have to be diligent with our application, continue to push, work together on this, and make sure that there's no daylight between our work and together on this. We stand committed, we should get this done. Please take the initiative, I'll work with you every second.
Thank you, Senator. Do you send us a representative or someone that will be briefing us on periodic basis in terms of this project?
Yeah, absolutely, whatever you need. There is a woman in Senate Finance named Allison Bradley, who has been in touch with both Commissioner Morando, the city manager's office, as well as the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Conservation, all of whom are going to do this. But at the end of the day, it's the city that has to submit a complete, thorough, and compelling application. We believe all the qualifications are there to do it, we just have to do it, let's work together.
Thank you. We look forward to that. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? I recognize Mary Monzel. Good evening and happy belated birthday. Mr. Morando, is this what we were discussing last meeting, doing the water plants and all of that with the grant? Is Senator Kandinsky talking about the same grant that I said they were having?
Yes.
And we have the paperwork started, am I correct?
The applications are all done with the exception of this bond organization. Both projects that will be presented, this one on the water separation, water basin covers, and the water tank, both applications are complete. There's been engineering design reports on both. As a matter of fact, the design report for the water tank, they don't even approve by the Nassau County Health Department. So we're well underway, we just need to do authorizations, and then these applications will be submitted.
And then we'll have everything we need to be compliant and healthy water and all of that, correct?
Well, we have, we have healthy water, so.
I'm sorry.
We will be replaced.
Healthier.
This will help us replace our infrastructure with help and action.
Okay, thank you. Yes, along with that?
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to ask a question on this. I hope I have your name. Myron Studart. Could you just explain to us what was the process of selecting these projects exactly? What was the selection process? Because how you chose it, who were the experts involved in it, and if you're going to vote it today, or if you're still going to discuss it? I'm sorry if I'm not as honest with you as I've been when you're ready. And also, given the water quality issue, is there going to be a committee that is going to be formed of some kind to oversee this process? And regarding the bonds, are the bonds going to be refundable? How many years will the bonds go? Meaning that if we apply for the bonds now, because we don't have the funds now, and we're going to get grants, given what, you know, the investigation that we have going on in the city and the states withholding funding until we take action on our finances, if they refuse the bond, or if it's delayed? How many years until you refund the bond, if it's a refundable bond? Thank you. Wait, hold on, wait, wait.
Well, the first project that we're presently discussing, the covers for the open air basins, was determined by our vulnerability assessment, and it might get here, so I'm viewing what we needed to do. This, to me, was a priority item. The open air basins, you know, are, could be a target for sabotage. Fortunately, for things like water quality, however, it's just one part of the treatment train. So things like bacteriological results, there's still water that comes through those just setups iron out. That water then moves on to sand filters for finishing. So it's not really an issue in terms of source of the very limited E coli event that we had. So that project was, you know, was chosen that way. The water tank project was chosen because, quite frankly, both tanks have lived their useful life. The stand pipe, that actually already had a service, it's 110 years old. It developed a leak over the winter, so it's been fairly costly to repair it, and it still would be really inadequate. The elevator tank, which is over 75 years old, is going to be used for painting soon, and that project itself would be probably in the neighborhood of $3 million to paint the tank, as well environmental requirements, and I'll discuss that with everyone when we discuss the bond issue on the replacement of the water tank.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening. June Schacter. I'm just asking a question about the difference between the one that was the $2 million and the $800,000, all right? So one is retractable and one is not retractable?
Well, actually, there were six different options. One is actually, the $2 million option was to build a structure over all the basins, and that would get quite expensive. And the retractable one was chosen because what these basins do is they settle, we precipitate the iron, we pollinate it with chemicals, settle the iron out, and then break the iron off at the bottom of the basins. But on a regular basis, we need to empty, you know, there's four basins there. We empty a basin at a time, we go in and wash down all the iron and wash it out down to the wastewater plant. So that needs to be done on a periodic basis. With the full structure of $2 million, we'd still be able to do that. The reason we're going retractable is that it will be much more economical. It would only score two points less than the $2 million option, and will allow our operators to retract them, get in and clean a basin, and then put the covers back on.
So the ease of cleaning is better with the retractable?
Well, the ease of cleaning is easier with the structure, but the $2 million, it really did make sense when there was another option.
So my next question is, what's the lifespan of each one of those options? Do we need to buy another one, you know?
The lifespan of the fabric on, the structure itself is an aluminum structure, will last a lifetime. The fabric on top of it is two pieces of polyvinyl, one is 20 mil and one is 30, and it has a mesh between them. And the life expectancy, guarantee life expectancy is 20 years. However, the manufacturer feels it'll last longer, but it's guaranteed for 20 years.
And the $2 million is a lifetime?
Lifetime, depending on the plant might need to be redone too. The plant is probably 50 or 60 years old.
That would be an void if you have to redo the plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions with respect to this first item? I would say none, and at this time, we're going to close the hearing.
Second public hearings for bond awards authorizing financing for replacement of the city's elevated water storage tank, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $9,245,400. Appropriating $9 million will set such purpose in authorizing issuance of $9 million bonds to finance said appropriation of $245,400 to be appropriated in the future and the expenditure of city water rate charges and up to $3 million grant funds expected to be received from the state of New York to be expended towards the cost of said object or purpose or redemption of the city's obligations issued therefore, or to be budgeted as an offset to taxes for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds.
All right, we can continue on with item number two.
Okay, we started to speak about some of the city first item, but basically, we have what's considered three and three-quarter million gallons storage presently, divided up into a 2 million gallon ground storage tank at the Park Place Plant, a 1 million gallons stand pipe, and a three-quarter million gallon elevated tank. The ground storage tank, we're able to use the full 2 million gallons of. The stand pipe, because pressure within the system is related to how high are the elevation of the water level in the stand pipe. In actuality, the stand pipe only gives us 360,000 gallons of usable water that would provide enough pressure. And the elevated tank, because it was built higher than the stand pipe, my guess is that the time they built the elevated tank, the stand pipe was already about 35 years old. They were probably planning on taking a gap, so they built the elevated tank higher. So we don't get the full use of 750,000 gallons in the elevated tank. We only get use of 640,000 gallons. So we have an effective storage of 3 million gallons. So in the engineering design report, what we looked at was to replace, not only the stand pipe, but to replace the elevator tank, which has been shortly need painting and they brought in $3 million. And we decided to replace it with a 1 and 1/4 million gallon elevated tank that has a concrete stanchion and a glass-infused steel wall at the top of the tank. If anybody's curious as to what that tank looks like, if you drive by Peninsula Boulevard and Southern State Parkway, and you can see the new tank that West Tenstead just put up, it'd be an identical tank to that. And as a result of the glass-infused steel and the concrete stanchion, this tank would not need painting every 15 years. So the ongoing maintenance cost of this tank would be more economical for the city going forward. In addition, with that 1 and 1/4 million gallons and the 2 million gallon ground storage tank, we would actually improve our effective water storage availability from 3 million gallons to 3.25 million gallons, which is more than what we need. Several financing, we are putting in for grants for this. We presently, in this year's capital budget, have $5 million to take down the stand pipe. We're already starting to work on engineering design for that. And then this would be in next year's budget to build the 1 and 1/4 million gallon tank, and then eventually, instead of painting the elevated tank, take the elevated tank down. We would replace two very old industrial-looking style tanks with one modern tank at the entrance, which I think would really just help you come into Long Beach also. There's a couple ways to finance this. We could get up to a $3 million grant in the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. We're putting that in through the rubber bonding to the engineering design report. And or we could end up financing it through EFC. Now, if we finance through EFC, the only issue is that we can only bond it over 30 years, whereas if we bond it through a general municipal bond, we can actually bond it over 40 years because of the, because it's much longer lifespan of the tank. So the bottom line is the impact is that under the 30-year scenario with the EFC funding, we would have total interest payments of $2,315,000 over 30 years. Or under a 40-year municipal bond, we would have about $541,000 worth of interest payments. However, the annual payment cost would be somewhat more economical. So the, you know, either way, it would be helpful to get the grant. So real impact, depending on how it's financed, would be actually just on, on total revenues received, would run somewhere between a 4.34% increase in water rates to a 7.55% decrease in water rates. And that would not be all on the residents' rates, that would also be on our other items that we have for, you know, fire sprinkler charges, road open permits, and all the revenue that we take into the system.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for questions from the council.
Another question, just a comment. It might just be who some of the people in the audience, if you explain what the function of the water tower is. It's not just to store water. What function it serves?
Right. Water storage does, has two functions. In an elevated tank, it helps maintain pressure in the system. Should we get a major power outage, it gives us some time to allow water to flow in by gravity into the system. But in addition, what storage does is, at times during the day, we're pumping, we average about 4.2 million gallons a day of pumpage. But there are times during the day when we're pumping at rates of 10 or 11 million gallons per hour or two. When we're pumping at those higher rates, we're taking water from the storage tanks, the ground storage tanks, and the elevated tank, and that supplements our well supply or the supply through our treatment. During times of low flow, that's when we're filling the tanks and preparing for the next high flow or if there's fire. So we designed this around being able to meet a maximum day flow with a fire at a major institution on, with one of our major wells out service. So this is what NStand requires us, the design assistant, to. And all this would meet all those requirements.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the floor for questions from the public with respect to item number two. Any questions from the public? Yes? Oh, okay. I recognize Myron Kandinsky.
Good evening. I have a question. I certainly understand the need for doing something with our water, since in some cases we haven't done it for 100 years. And I want to say water. On the other hand, Newsday just had an article where we are the fifth highest paying water district on Long Island, paying an average of $765 a year compared to, for example, the Ringland at $148 a year. So now, I think you just said we might go up another 4% for our water?
Actually, I'm very surprised at that because when I saw that in the Newsday article, I said something doesn't sound right about that. So I went in and calculated with the help of our billing staff what our average bills are for residential customers. And actually, average bill is $285. The reason it was reported so high was Newsday did not do any follow-up to check with the citizens' campaign and provided them the information. Citizens' campaign included the sewer charge, that's on top of the water rate, that's how they came out with the $785 number. There is no other There is no other water supplier in Nassau County that has a sewer fee. In addition, a lot of those lower-priced water districts like Greenhorn, Roslyn, they also charge a tax. If you go to their town tax bills, you'll see there's an annual water tax that also goes towards their bill. They use a water tax to pay for the infrastructure improvements and a water rate for their cost of operating, you know, chemicals, electricity, gas, things of that nature. So that is really not a fair comparison that they did. You really need to look at those bills, take averages home, find out what their tax on top of their water bill would be. And you would see that the rates really, over time, are pretty equal, it's just differently how they collect them. So the average bill without the sewer rate here in Long Beach is $285.
A year?
Yes. Now, that means some people pay more, some people pay less. And I expect for a few people that live in Long Beach today.
No, I appreciate that explanation because this is a big number here.
Yeah, but you remember, the water bill, the other thing is, they use it based on 110,000 gallons per household each year. Many homes in other areas have, many water suppliers pump two to three times more their average pumpage during the summer because of irrigation. There's not a lot of irrigation in Long Beach. We only pump one and a half times our average pumpage during the summer months. So there's a lot less irrigation consumption in Long Beach.
All right, so you're saying that our bill of $285 is approximately sort of average for Long Island? Well, I hope that's true because this is not good. Thank you very much for the explanation.
Just so you know, that's almost known as a calculated by citizens' campaign for the environment. And for 40 years that I've been in this business, they have been pushing for the Nassau County Water Authority. They would rather see all the water supply supplied by one supplier after all, all the communities in Nassau County. And really, if you were building a system for water supply as Nassau County, you wouldn't build a system any different than it's built now. The most economical way to build a groundwater system is to put the supply as close as possible to the demand, to avoid having to have, like New York City where they got, you know, 48-inch transmission beams and things of that nature. So the system would be designed any different.
Okay, thank you for the question. My other question would be, is it possible for us to post some kind of correction article within Newsday to clarify the situation? How is it retired being in Newsday?
Yeah, Gordon Kepner did reach out to Newsday about it. They said they didn't calculate the numbers, it was citizens' campaign for the environment, and that you would have to check with them. And I think Gordon was following, Gordon Ryan was following up with them.
Excellent, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, I'll open the hearing.
Okay, third public hearings or bond orders authorizing financing for various municipal projects needed for the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York City. The estimated total cost thereof is $15,336,841. Appropriated, set it out therefore, including the expenditure of $6,826,441. Expected to be received in the state or federally, authorizing actions of not to exceed $15,336,841 bonds of said city to finance said incorporation. And further authorizing any amounts received from the United States, from America, and all the states of New York to be expanded towards the cost of certain of such capital projects in a finicated period, or redemption of any notes and bonds issued therefore, or be budgeted as an offset to the taxes for payment of the principal of and interest on said notes and bonds.
All right, one more time. Commissioner Miranda?
This is really just a follow-up on the previously approved capital plan. There's multiple items in here. There are some projects that are waiting to go, that depend on passing this bond. For example, we've just found out the bid with the $12 million governance officer storm recovery project for the North Shore Vaulthead. This includes a million and a half dollars from last year's capital budget, so that we can hire an independent act tractor for those cases where we're going to have to remove projects that have been built on public property. If we don't have that money to do that project, we're going to be losing $12 million in the state. And also, we have bid out the 200 block we spoke for completely over reconstruction, including water mains, sewer mains. Gas companies are replacing the gas main there. New curb sidewalk, street lighting, that project will have to be put on hold. There's equipment in here for the fire department that's necessary, there's self-potent breathing apparatus, there's, and there are automatic defibrillators that they asked for replacement for. NFPA requires a sunset on the length of time that volunteer firefighters can use their self-potent breathing apparatus, so that needs to be replaced in the time we matter. We have a third payment for the police department's RMS program. This will be the third year of software that they purchased over a three-year period. We capitalized $92,000 in each of the last three years. If we don't get that, we're going to lose our license, I guess, for that program. So there's a lot of projects, these are all previously discussed. You know, I could make it another, our presentation on different projects, but if anybody has a specific question about any one particular project, everyone has to try and answer it.
Yes, earlier this year, we were able to successfully present all those items during our capital plan presentation to the public. Are there any questions from the city council at this time?
In Schedule 1 column, are those the proposed payback periods for each of the projects or items?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess...
And those are based on state finance or how long you can finance particular projects for them.
Okay, and then just maybe a question from his resident, perhaps. What does this do to our debt service? What is the impact on our debt service?
Well, I don't know if you can see it, but this wouldn't impact, oh, okay. This wouldn't impact our debt service until after the projects are expanded, which would be next year's budget. But we made a concentrated effort over the last two years to come in with a capital budget that was less than the debt owed on the remaining capital projects that were paying for.
That's efficient. Okay. Thank you. At this time, we want to open up the floor for questions from the public. Yes, Mr. Stewart?
Thanks for taking my question again. My card is pounding really fast because I feel like, you know, when you get your credit card to buy like a 4K TV and it's like, like $4,000 and you know you can't afford it and you're going to pay it somehow? And you feel like this feeling, this is exactly how I feel right now, and I'm very concerned that we don't have money for this, and we really don't. Our, the city of Long Beach credit is two notches above junk. And if you pass these bonds, which of course you're going to have to do to be able to do the infrastructure that has been delayed so long, we might be able, we might, Moody's already said there's a negative outlook for our credit. And with these over $25 million in bonding, we're probably going to go to junk. Our interest rate is going to go up, and I'm very concerned of how the people behind me are going to pay for this. I mean, I live here too, and everything is getting expensive. And how much exactly is these $30 million going to cost us in taxes per capita next year?
Just remember, of the $15 million that were approved in, and I wish I brought a bigger sheet, it was my idea to do this one ago, over 6 million of this will be coming back in FEMA funding.
Yes, but there's 30 million, 6 million, it's, we're bonding a lot of money. It's over $10 million that we're going to have to pay in taxes. How much did you, how much, you know, I've heard a lot of mansplaining here, away things. And I read, you know, Newsday, a well-researched article in Newsday, and you, I'm sure you have all the facts, but you're not, the city isn't being transparent. We don't have the details that you have. Once you put the details out, then we'll be on the same level, and we won't be talking past each other, we'll be talking on the same page. We don't, we don't have these details.
Let me just interject for a moment. It's unfortunate that you're just coming to us now with this question, but it's a valid question, and we're going to give you all the information that we can right here today. The presentation was made several months ago here to many of the people who are sitting here with respect to our capital plan. And we do that presentation annually, and that information is shared with the public. It's also on our website, so you can also access that information. And before you leave here, we'll make sure that you're able to see the link so that you can get that information. So that's one step. And then after you review that information, if there are additional questions, we'll try to get as many of those questions answered for you. In terms of bonding, I think everyone in this room is going to be concerned about bonding because we've heard the word at this point, it has a negative connotation because of a lot of incidents that have occurred. But unfortunately, unfortunately, the reality is, when you are dealing with infrastructure that is aging, we are forced to be in a situation, like many other municipalities across New York State, that we have to address those issues. And one of the only ways that we can do that is through bonding. Now, earlier this year, during our budget proposal, the council aggressively said that we were working towards not only some form of budget reform, so that we could address some of this issue with respect to the debt service. And that is something that we are going to tackle in the next couple of months, and obviously moving into 2020, so that the residents will feel safe and more confident about this issue in terms of debt service. All right? So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. I don't want to take any more time, and I just have one final question. I do remember the budget, I did read over it. It's just not here today for people, you know, who have not seen it before. It would be helpful. But what are going to be the taxes that are going to be, how much will the tax go up next year over this, these bonds?
Right. Do you want to?
Yeah, that's not an answer we would have now. Each one of these will depend on the rates we get for the bonds, and how many of the projects are actually in, have been built by next year. And, you know, they may be in various stages, some may be in design, some may be in the middle of construction, some may be completed. And based on that, that will add to the overall budget. And just one comment, I made this during the budget presentation, the reason you bond for capital improvements is so that the people who are benefiting from the improvement pay for it. So in other words, if we make a water tank improvement, and we have a water tank that's there bonded for 40 years, you live in your house for 20 years, you paid for 20 years of that improvement because you benefited from it. The person you sell the house to, they might live there for the next 20 years, they paid for the remaining 20 years on their taxes because it's an improvement they benefited from. That's the reason you bond capital improvement projects.
But why do the residents have to bear the brunt when we have, we are a summertown, we have a lot of tourists coming in here every summer, we, a lot of our businesses make their money off the tourists. Why are you putting it all on the residents that are here year-round? Has anybody talked about offsetting these bond costs with additional revenue streams?
Absolutely, we have, and that was part of our whole budget session. So I'm going to put a pause on it here, but thank you once again for raising those issues.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Ali Heshen?
Thank you, Ali Heshen. I just have a few questions. We're looking at this, right?
Yes.
A couple of questions on it. Under transportation, it says two buses are being replaced for $50,000, is that right?
Well, $50,000 is the city share. The rest is coming through the federal transportation.
Oh, okay. I thought that was pretty cheap for a bus, but if you go down further for the police department, two vehicles, $135,000.
Yeah, those vehicles are equipped with lights, sirens, radios, special...
Right, I figured the fire truck costs $25,000, the sirens are on a police car, you know. $135,000 is a lot. Are those regular?
They also have a little bit more than the equipment in police cars, you know.
Yeah, are they regular police cars? They're not Lexuses, are they? Okay, I have another question. Under buildings, the West End Firehouse bathroom renovation was $92,000. Didn't we just build that building for like $4 million or something like that?
That building was renovated, but there's been a lot of issues with the bathroom needs to be redone. And that, that particular project with the contractor, it's been in a lawsuit that was just finally settled.
Because there's a lawsuit involved with that issue. Oh, okay, thank you. And then reconstruction of the beach comfort station, is that the one in the West End that they just finished?
No, those are the, these are going to be the new bathrooms at Neptune, New York, and also Life by headquarters, every side.
Okay, thank you.
And that, by the way, just went out to bid this week, so.
Thank you. The tree inventory, $25,000? And I see that it's being funded.
Yes, if we can do a tree inventory, and we have our office do a tree inventory with some work from Cornell Cooperative, we will be able to get more ground stone for a tree replacement.
Good. And then finally, under various, you have consulting services for design. What does that mean?
Well, from time to time, projects come up that we, as an example, we've had some, this past year, we've had some offers on the city garage, and we hired a consultant to go out and do some preliminary design work to relocate the garage to a more appropriate area. So those are the kind of things that can come up during the course of the year.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, great question. Yes, we're here. Good evening, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly, Long Beach. Is any of this budget look towards maintenance of these units that we're purchasing?
Maintenance is in the operating budget. Any maintenance that's not on the line of any of the infrastructure is in the operating budget item. With the exception of things like tank paintings, we have a major, like I said earlier, if we were to paint the elevated storage tank, it would be about $3 million job, that we would be able to capitalize because it's supposed to have a 15-year life.
But what about maintenance of what's existing?
Maintenance of what's existing, that's all done in the, that's all done, that's all done in the operating budget.
Why would you explain that?
It's done every year, every year. Well, you know, vehicles, I mean, we maintain our garbage trucks, we've got garbage trucks that are 14 years old, and the typical life of a garbage truck is about seven years. So we do maintain our equipment, but sometimes the equipment runs out of its useful life and it needs to be replaced.
Okay, one good question, thank you. Hold on a minute, Karen McGinnis?
Good evening, Council. Karen McGinnis, 102 Pennsylvania Avenue. I had a question, a follow-up question about one item on here that we talked about during the capital approval process. I had suggested, while small, that we should look into getting donations for a new scoreboard, and I wanted to know how that went.
That's not my area.
That's not my area?
I mean, that's not my area, doing donations. I get requests for irrigation department, and so I put it in the capital budget, some may go to need it.
So just for purposes of clarification, because obviously I wasn't chairing the meeting at the time, can you just be a little more specific with respect to the donations?
Yes, but we were all here, and we talked about the capital plan, and we suggested that, and I said that, you know, there's plenty of people that would probably donate the money to buy a new scoreboard. This is Long Beach, after all. We couldn't rally up 24 or 20 grand to get a new scoreboard?
It sounds like a good idea, I can't seem to remember it, Mr. McGinnis, but...
I don't remember what it said.
You know, there's been a lot of things said in this room, but it is, it's a very good idea, actually. I think we should look into it.
Yeah, and I think the whole purpose is, again, trying to engage with our civic organizations and move forward with partnerships. There are many people who can donate, it's just that we have to reach out. And so for whatever reason, at the city, we failed to reach out, but we can absolutely look into that in the future. Anything that we can do to save the residents another dollar, we'll be willing to do that.
Thank you. And one other question?
And just a comment, if somebody makes a donation to replace the scoreboard, if we approve the bond, doesn't even have to bond that money for the scoreboard?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So we hope that's...
In other words, you don't have to bond and take on that debt?
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay. My second question goes to something Mr. Miranda had said previously concerning useful life of vehicles. You give the example where we have garbage trucks that are 14 years old, right? And yet the typical life is seven years. As another example, the police... As another example, the police department vehicles that we're buying are $67,500 each. Where I believe in the PPU column that Mr. Bando referred to says three years. So does that mean that the useful life is three years for the police vehicle?
No, no, we have to refer to the police commissioner what useful life is. But what that column explains is what the state finance law allows us, the length of time they allow us to bond something for. There's, like a garbage truck, we're only allowed to bond for five years, actually, until we keep them longer than we should.
Okay, so this brings me to my final point. Do we have a vehicle useful life policy, and if so, why not?
We try to use the vehicles as long as we can keep them running and maintain them where they don't, you know, become more of an expense. When things start becoming more of an expense, then it's time to replace it because the interest and principal payment may be cheaper than maintaining them.
The interesting thing is that with a useful, a vehicle useful life policy would only help you do your job because then you wouldn't have to ask the council for money because you could say, every seven years, I need a new garbage truck. That would actually help you so that city council members couldn't pass them up to later administrations to buy your trucks.
Okay, so let's pause right here, and let's just find out from a legal perspective, if we can hear from corporate councils, do we have a policy which addresses this issue? We just need a clarification here.
I'm not aware of that type of the vehicle policy. I think what we do is what Commissioner Miranda said, is we try and extend the useful life of vehicles as much as we can. You know, we.
Which is the operating budget. So I suggest you go to other municipalities on Long Island, which there are many, which have vehicle usage policies. Thank you.
Okay, with hold on, we still need to answer another question with respect to the actual vehicles. Our Commissioner Tecky is here in the room, and I'm going to ask him if he could come forward and address this body at this time.
Just a police car, so.
Yes.
Right at the hurricane safety, we bond each county sheriff's department, don't they? Can't be able to sit in the city room and say police cars. We actually still have one of those on the road. So what we do is we squeeze every mile we can out of the cars until a safety issue or an expense issue arises. The average rate of a motor vehicle is probably a little over 10 years.
Isn't it really based on a vehicle-by-vehicle basis?
Absolutely. This, like, the vehicle I, it's a 2006, it owns 10,000 miles, 8,000 miles a year. So that vehicle is going to last a very little time. Regular patrol vehicle that operates 24 hours a day, 7 days a week is going to take quite a bit of beating, and it's not going to have that same lifetime. So, and we also have a very impressive pit town policy where when we encounter a vehicle and determine it's useful for police work, and then we seize that vehicle, if it's not claiming an offensive or whatever, we also do access forfeiture when we get vehicles. So a good part of our fleet has been gotten approved. The vehicle I drive, we seize from the owner, the driver. The detective, Inspector Ryan's vehicle is also a seized vehicle. So a lot of our detective vehicles are seized vehicles. So we are being very aggressive in that area.
Okay, thank you very much for the reservation.
It would be very helpful to future police commissioners to have a vehicle useful life policy.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Dean.
I'm Dean Long Beach, just a rhetorical question.
Please.
A rhetorical question. The old lady brought up a thing about the impact of bonding on our taxes. I believe there's been a commitment, and we probably have done some work, to provide the budget to New York State. I have to believe that part of the budget in the state is revenue taxing and stuff like that. And so that's all projected on money we're going to get, money we're going to borrow, money we'll spend. And I find it hard to believe that at this stage, beginning, we still don't know what we're going to do next year, in the year after. With taxes in front of me, and it's a shame that I'm not that far. And I understand, because we're very close, I understand there's a CMA's been here about four, five months. We should be hoping at least to pay the budget, and we should have a good idea of when we're done. If we don't, then somebody's not too much.
Okay, and I just want to remind everyone that the CMA is still currently in the process of engaging in inventory. They're actually looking over all of our departments, and they will be issuing a statement to, that will be shared to the council at some time. I can't say when, but I can tell you that the process is taking place.
I understand, and for me, knowing that they were here before on certain departments, so that's what they don't have. But knowing that we're supposed to provide stuff in New York State, there has to be some preparatory stuff for that going on now. So we have to have an idea. We have to have a ballpark of indication, is the way we're going. And if those houses won't succeed, they don't have an idea where their income is going to be next year and how they're going to spend next year.
Absolutely.
We don't have those ducks in a row, but we might as well just do it with shit like that.
Well, Mr. Dean, I think you're usually a commentator. They're very well received, and I think your comments are extremely decisive, as always. With respect to those deadlines they're referring to, the New York State controllers, their deadlines, their calendar deadlines, basically the budget, they don't have it until the beginning of the next calendar year. That's when the budget review starts, but really, the timing, it's going to be, in terms of CMA, it's going to be pegged for to the next revision review, which we anticipate happening sometime early next year, past January.
Yeah, I accept what you're saying, in the process. I know that I've worked in budget planning.
There's also.
But what I'm trying to say is this, on day one of the budget document, there's the 100% ballpark number, and you're working your way down from that, and you're splitting it out into great detail. And so on a big, broad-based basis, we should have an idea of what we're going to do next year, the year after, the year after, the year after, and whether or not we believe we're going to have to raise taxes. And I think that's a good question from the old ladies.
That's it.
What's an broad-based plan we have? And I understand that nobody wants to pay more taxes. Nobody does. And then, but sometimes we have to, and if we have to, we have to. I don't think anybody's going to give us a commitment to happy, but they'll do it willingly if they know that the planning and the preparation and the due diligence we're putting there. And right now, I think everybody knows that people feel that that's not 100%. I know we're unaware, and I appreciate everything that everybody's been doing. I'm just saying that when questions like that come up, and you're giving that for, well, we don't know that it's yet. We're working on that. And at some point in time, you have to say, have you done this?
Yeah, and as a fair statement, where I was going to mention was that Simon Peanuts, Simon Peanuts 2, I should say, CMA's departmental review that they're conducting as we speak. They're also drafting a five-year plan and have been involved with our committee drafts back and forth with the controller, particularly as it relates to a statement projecting cash flows over the next five years. So those drafts exist, and they are being exchanged as we speak. So that process, if you're referring to the long-range management planning process, that is well underway.
Your time has expired, but thank you again for raising this very important issue. I believe there was another hand on the other side, Allison Blanchett.
And Allison's coming up also. Every year, we do a five-year capital plan, so we have a five-year outlook on capital. This is a different five-year plan. No, no, I understand that it ties into that five-year plan. So the capital portion of it is really out there already, and you have to make adjustments each year with these aspects.
Good evening.
Just wanted to make a comment.
All right, please, just Michael.
Just a follow-up comment about Karen's comment about vehicle use policy. We should have a fleet manager now, so we should have a fleet management policy, correct?
Fleet management policy?
Okay, how about fleet manager, Michael Robinson is managing.
That's accurate, provisional, yes, accurate. And as far as the policy goes, no, we haven't, not yet.
Oh, is that possible that we can see a fleet management policy?
Sure.
That department?
Okay.
So if you want to put them to actual use. So if this goes through, which I suspect it will, am I finally going to get bus shelters that I've been asking for since 2012? Literally, since 2012. I've promised every year that the DOT is going to be getting bus lights and shelters, but it seems every year I keep getting let down, jet prompt, I mean, all sorts of promises as well.
Oh, they're ordered, they're ordered.
How long will this take? Is this actually going to happen?
Yeah.
I did need Brendan Estelle to talk about the audit, the fee audit, in terms of maybe this is submitted to the FDA, and he has done a lot of work on it already. So that would be helpful in getting these things done.
I know we're in the process of preparing a response to try and review as we speak. This is my thing to that.
Okay. Since I've been promised this, or questions indeed, but.
Please do your microphone.
These bus drivers have been promised these new shelters for years? I'm going to assume that the funding had never gone through for the local match on the grants? So is that?
It's been carried for three capital questions I've been given for. It's been carried on and carried over each year, but has not been bonded yet. So this is the first one where it's considered to be bonded.
I've never, I've never seen this stuff through a sub-whether push, just for a thinking function. And how long will that, would that take? Would this be this year? Is the head of DOT here?
He's not. You say this year you're referring to the fiscal year?
Um, yeah, I just want to know when I can actually, I want to see these things realized.
I'm not here right now to answer that question, but I think it's better shot at fiscal year, certainly at the calendar.
Okay.
Or September, the calendar.
Could we follow up and phone conversation or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Another question? Mike Lowry?
Good evening, Council. My name's Lowry Long Beach. Thank you, Commissioner Miranda, for all of this work. My three questions, two of which are just an update. If you could just update me or us on the Edwards Avenue, where we are, where we hope we will be. The establishment of the Office of Emergency Management, where we are today, where you hope to have it completed. And the last comment would be on the scoreboarding, the roll rate that this lady has brought up. I do remember it. However, my only comment or question would be is can Billy Crystal's fund, which I believe is in excess of $700,000, be used to somehow offset that? Thank you.
Right, we have some answers. We'll start with the Edwards Avenue, that was the first question.
Edwards Avenue has, the whole design concept has been approved by the DOT. Once we have this fine new money, the design will be completed, and we'll go out to bid this year. And construction will be complete, I would think, with spot in the spring of next year. And the.
OEM's done?
The OEM should be getting completed in the next two weeks, and then we have to install equipment. And once the equipment's installed, we'll be doing a dry run with all the associated parties. Once we work out all the kinks, we'll probably have a public showcase of the OEM.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And on the scoreboard, I don't think we can, because I don't know if it was sanding related, right? That's the condition, it has, you have to be able to draw a line back somehow, sanding or access those funds.
Do you remember the business lights that we used?
Microphone, please.
I think we replaced business lights using that money. I'm sure there's interest earned on that $700,000 or $800,000. In a 3% a year, you probably would make $24,000. But it's just a delight, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Jay Dustin?
Good evening. Good evening, Jay, from Long Beach. Just touching on a couple of items. First, as a fair assumption, I'd like to say that as bitter a pill as it is to borrow this money and to have to deal with the inevitable tax increase that will come with it, at least this is the thing that is tangible, that future generations will derive some benefit from, as opposed to the city's habit of borrowing separation payments, which provide absolutely no benefit for the future generations that will be shouldering the cost. Now, that's it. The OEM office was also on my mind, because I recall being led to believe that it was going to be fully grant-funded, but here we are borrowing $185,000 for it. So I'm looking for an explanation for that. But before we get into the explanation for that, I'd like to also know why this thing has been sitting in this state for as long as it has? We've been coming here for months. Well, divides this room up, and the work that's been done there is a minuscule amount of work. It could have been done in weeks, I just don't understand. I have been told that the work has come to a halt because the city's been unable to play its contract. So I'd like to know whether that's the case, and if not, whether or not there's another explanation. The other item in this particular agenda, I don't want to discuss the elevators, which have been, we've been operating on one elevator for, God, five, six months now, a long time, a very long time. I mean, it's an elevator. This is not some new-fangled technology. I mean, it's a box and a shaft, I think it's pulled up and down by cables and pulleys and a motor. I don't know how we could possibly have been without the service of a second elevator for all this time. I mean, we can do whatever we got to do with this emergency, Office of Emergency Management, but if people can't get up and down to it, then it kind of impacts the effectiveness of it. The other thing with it is, is we're talking about $100,000. I don't know, I'm on an elevator, I've never built an elevator, but $100,000 seems like an awful lot of money to me. And the other aspect of it is, why do we need to borrow it? How is it that we don't have money lying around to get this elevator fixed? But yet we have money lying around to hire outside lawyers to defend these people?
That's a good question. Another question with respect to the, there was a question about if the OEM was being grant-funded? Is there any clarification with that?
The OEM is completely befunded by Gosa. There is not true that the city has not been paying the bills. We cannot pay, because the way that the Gosa contracts are set up, we cannot pay the contractor until we receive the money from Gosa. Gosa sends us a check, we then have five days to turn it over to the contractor. There was a holdup on some change orders that Gosa was holding on to approve, and then after the change orders were finally approved, the contractor came back, started working again. And then payment was held up because Gosa felt there was a $5.35 mistake in one of the bills. We had to go through all the entire bills to try to find it with the contractor. Once that was done and settled, then there were several pages that were released. We are not, we did not bond this project, so the money, we waited for the money from Gosa. So it's not true that the city was holding up the contractor. And if you talk to the contractor, they'll tell you about our discussions with Gosa representatives over this. In addition, the $185,000 is for equipment that goes in, courtesy of the OEM office. And I believe that will be reimbursed from a grant that we got through Senator Komenisky's office.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions with respect to this item? See, now I'm going to close this hearing. Also, I'd like to go on record stating that there is another item that has not been included on this evening's resolution, on this evening's calendar. I do need to read that information to everyone. This is a resolution that's coming from the City Council. The resolution reads, "Resolved that the acting city manager is here with directed to provide the city council with a copy of any and all employment agreements or other such writings between the acting city manager and the city of Long Beach." Again, this is under the City Council of Long Beach and/or the city manager of Long Beach City, including any or only the employment agreements for any appointed position that he has been appointed to within the city of Long Beach, but also any writings that address his wages, hours, or benefits while deployed in any capacity by the city of Long Beach. Said documents are to be delivered to the president of the council within 48 hours of the time of adoption of this resolution.
Do you end this? Are we going to need unanimous consent to end this item?
I have not had an opportunity to review the item, as apparently it took place and was discussed just with certain members of the council, not with me. She took that from the council and she should have the opportunity to speak at this point. I can consent to putting something on the calendar that I haven't had an opportunity even to look at or read. Apparently, there is a council that's been retained. I'm not sure how or with who. Perhaps that council is the one that prepared this agenda item. I don't know who that council is. It was my understanding, based upon what you said, that the majority of the council retained this attorney. I haven't had an opportunity to review it, to speak with it, understand where the authority is for it. So, with that, I would not consent to putting it on the calendar. Okay, at this time, we understand that we cannot include this onto the calendar. However, we can, at this time, respectfully ask that our acting city manager provide the document.
Yes.
And goodness, we just went forward. Is it possible for you, at this time, to agree to actually provide the documents to us?
I'll take any requests under advisement. Obviously, it's not proper. As I mentioned multiple many times on this day, it's to discuss individual personnel matters because these A can't work. It's not easy to close, but I'll take any request under advisement. What's the quickest way to write? Can you do a technical session?
Our fourth public hearing is a resolution granted by the board of people of the four hundred and seventy-eight West Park Avenue for a protein shake juice bar and supplement store.
Good evening.
I'm David S. Moll, my wife Marianne.
Okay, good evening. Once again, would you just kindly share the nature of the business with us?
Big fight, goal wishing. Two seventy-eight West Park Avenue is going to be a protein shake juice bar. Basically, it's set up for a healthier way of drinking. Basically, I'm originally from Long Beach myself. And I want to bring back a business in Long Beach that will kind of change things more on a healthier aspect of it. There's a lot of places to have what they say, healthy supplements and stuff like that. But this is basically more on the natural, a little organic. And I'm going to be bringing a product that is not animal nature at all, which is a food. It's soy. And basically, what it does is if you have a shake and you set it down for an hour, it stays bond. It doesn't separate or any of that. Also, what my wife wants to do as well, as part of the business, is that during holidays or every, anything that comes about, for the periodic part of the year, we want to get back to the community, go to the fire department, see the Santa Claus on sight. And we want to give choice for that and stuff like that. Every holiday that we do, we'll help set up something within the store. Then fifty feet of synergy gym that we are, actually, that's who we plan to get, to two years to get that property. We also want to do interior marketing with something maybe with cars and specials and stuff like that. But for the most part, the business is set up for the people of Long Beach to actually have something that they can enjoy. And they don't have to go to another place where they could say, oh, do we have a shake? And that's not what they actually, you know, get. They're going to get something specifically made at this place. And that's all we manage generally.
That's very interesting. Now, what, can you just kindly tell us the dates and hours of your operation?
We will be open seven days a week. Operation hours will be?
Eight, and how many employees?
One hour, just a little up and my son and my, my
Three daughter.
Okay. And will your business actually require curbside deliveries?
Yes.
Okay. Can you specify in terms of how many times a month or basically?
We have two main distributors. They will probably be outside me, the boxes. Maybe three feet, like two feet. So, it's something that's going to be quick, it's a quick delivery. So, it'll be twice a month.
In times of chaos, you've asked potential owners, the perspective use of bike racks. The city is not responsible to purchase the rack, but would you be interested in moving forward with securing a bike rack so that many of your customers could use the rack?
Would you propose something to think about?
Are there any other questions from members of the council? At this time, we'll open up questions for the public. Are there any questions? We see none. We want to close the hearings. We'll be with you shortly and thank you.
Hey, our last public hearing is a resolution granted by the board of people of the four hundred and seventy-eight West Beach Street for Wellness Center and CBD related product stores.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Robert Tomcasty Long Beach.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. And once again, can you just share with us a little information about the nature of your business?
Absolutely. It's going to be called Your CBD Store. And it's all CBD based wellness products, mostly topical creams, tinctures, potions, vitamins. And it's just for basic health and wellness. It's an alternative to prescription medicine or pharmaceutical products. And it's a hundred percent organic. It's made domestically. We'll be using one sole product called Summit. It is made in the U.S. It's all natural. It's very far tested, so it's guaranteed safe and reliable.
Excellent. All right. Can you just tell us at this time, the dates and hours of operation?
Sure. Monday through Saturday, ten AM to six PM.
Okay, and how many employees?
Right now, we're just me, myself, and my wife.
Okay. And also, will your business require curbside delivery?
Yes.
Okay. And can you just give us approximate amount, number in terms of per month, please?
One to two times a month. We're not holding a great amount of inventory, so we don't have to do that too often.
Okay. And again, as previously stated, we are not responsible for bike racks, but is this something that you might consider?
It is a main mode of transportation, especially in Los Angeles, so yes.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from members of the council?
Just have a brief one. Would you mind explaining just briefly what CBD is, so people can understand?
Absolutely. So, CBD stands, it's basically short for cannabinoid. And what that is, is a compound found in the hemp plant. It has a lot of medicinal benefits. If you do associate cannabis or medical marijuana, it's not this at all. This is, you get the effects of the CBD without the THC, which does cause the, you know, psych war and active effects.
So, these products do not contain any THC?
No.
Are they legal to sell?
Absolutely.
In the best thing, or is there a way?
Yeah, there are actually. There are none in actual New York or Long Island, but there are several more CBD stores in upper New York.
Any special license required for CBD sale?
No, it's all federally approved and no special licenses required.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? We're, I'm going to, at this time, we're going to have questions for the public. Any questions? Yes? Come step down if you may.
Hi, Fern Hill.
Can you just speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Is there age requirement or seniority products? Or you can look together if you are above the age or not, it's not above. And is there a limit on the purity of the CBD being sold? I speak about this as wanting not to promote the children that are somewhere in that horrible age, above twelve and below eighteen. They ride around our neighborhoods unattended. And I mean, we'd like to think that they're upstanding youngsters and pretty adult, but not everyone will be. And I'm more worried about the children.
Okay, has one question?
Thank you for that question. Absolutely, there will be eighteen year olds that purchase it, even though there are no psychoactive effects, but it's still a form of natural medication. And our main demographic actually is between the ages of fifty-five and eighty-five. So, we're targeting the older crowd, which is not familiar with dings and pains and infestation.
And it's so flattering, okay. Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, I want to close the hearing.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. I have one through three, and as you're telling them already, I implore the resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into a contract for the complete reconstruction of the two hundred block of East Fulton Street between Monroe Road and Long Beach Road, with the lowest responsible rate and transfer funds.
Let's get it. Commissioner Orlando?
Okay, this is a, again, a complete road reconstruction for the two hundred block of East Fulton. Gas companies are replacing the gas main there. We will be replacing the water, water services, the sewer main, sewer laterals, putting in new sidewalks, right away with the curbs. And there will be new roadway pavement as well as a new lighting system. In addition, we have a grant that I've worked out with the New York State Health Department. Any of the services that we find that are galvanized and have like doos next will be reimbursed by the state health department. We'll be sure of completing it until we open the road up and see what we have. But this project was bid, there were four bidders, and the low bidder was Allen Industries at a price of seven hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred dollars. Allen Industries has done successful work for us in the past, as an example. West Hudson was one of his most recent projects. This might not be a plausible bid.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council at this time? Any questions? We see none. We want to, once again, open this up to the public. Are there any questions, concerns with respect to item? Yes, Allison Lanchet?
Okay, thank you, Allison Lanchet. Gentlemen, curiosity here. What is the cutoff point? The, the boundary line where it is Long Beach versus Nassau County?
That would be that would be based on the right of way map that the county has. Typically, from the curb line into the roads or the county road is fifteen feet owned by the county. But I would have to look on the, it's actually through the right ways, but we will bring it all the way up to the property lines.
Okay, so I'm curious, the part of East Fulton that is going up against Long Beach Road, the crosswalk right there, will be redone?
The crosswalk will be redone, yes.
Okay. And there's a very wide turning radius, the way it was engineered. So, that concerns me for safety reasons, because cars do not need to slow down because it's not a tight corner. And I'm curious, if you are redoing the curbs, is there any plan in place? Or could there be a plan in place to tighten the turning radius?
Presently, it's designed to replace as is in crime. However, we could look at a change order. I'm not sure it would be that much of an expensive change order to make. But I would have to take a look at it for us to make sure, from an engineering standpoint of view, that it makes sense.
And I think the question is also, not just for East Fulton, but just in general for all the roads that you reach up and hit a county road. If there is a reconstruction project going on, and you are able to go in and kind of cut into the sidewalk crossing area, tighten up that space. Now, I know that with like bump outs, those are problematic when you're moving from the city for shoveling purposes. We discussed that previously. But I think for safety purposes, this could make sense. But I am curious, if you did want to do something, whether it's a basic followers or bump out, would you be able to do that, or is that?
I would have that discussion with the Nassau County Highway Department, make sure that they're on board with it.
Okay. Could I follow up with you to set up? Do you have?
Absolutely.
And do you have the actual plan to find all the?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is this pretty much kind of replicating East Jackson or the two hundred block? How that would shut up, re-young, the curbs are done. Is there going to be something similar to that?
Similar to West Hudson and to West Park Street. I was, I think I was here for East Jackson.
Now, I was.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Follow up with any more? Are there any other questions before item number five? Seeing none, we're going to close. Four, sorry.
I implore the resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into agreement for professional engineering services to assist the city with community rating system, CRS cycle verification, and to develop a floodplain management plan.
All right, the community rating system is a voluntary program for National Flood Insurance Program participating communities. The goals of CRS are to reduce flood damage to insurable properties, strengthen support the insurance aspects of NF5P, and encourage accomplices to approach the floodplain management. The CRS has developed and provided incentives in the form of premium discounts for communities that go beyond the minimum floodplain management requirements to develop extra measures to provide protection from flooding. In October of two thousand eight, the city submitted its CRS application in accordance with the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System for nature management issued in two thousand on. The city received notification that it received one thousand four credit points. This equates to a CRS classification of class eight, which meant residents in the class eight community receive a ten percent discount on flood insurance premiums. From two thousand eight on, the city worked on improvements in the CRS. And on November twelfth, two thousand fourteen, the city received notification that it received one thousand five hundred and two credit points as a result of the verification cycle. This equates to a CRS classification of class seven. Residents in class seven, which is the entire city of Long Beach, receive a fifteen percent reduction in flood insurance premiums. The city of Long Beach has been participating in the Nassau County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard mitigation plan, but participation in the plan satisfies a critical prerequisite identified in section five, ten of the flood management planning document. Unfortunately, in the last week of July, came to attention that Nassau County multi-hazard mitigation plan is expiring and therefore cannot be utilized to satisfy the CSR prerequisite requirements. And the county is not going to follow up on that plan. So, we put together an RFP, sent it out to eleven firms. Only one firm responded, PetroTech, and has been, we want to contract them to perform a comprehensive analysis of the new NF5B CRS manual and made recommendations to the city with activities that can be implemented to improve standing in the program. The intent is to include the city's class status from class seven, fifteen percent reduction in flood insurance premiums, to a class six, twenty percent reduction in flood insurance premiums. PetroTech Services will include the scope of work, including preparing to submit the city's cycle reverification package to the community rating system, evaluating the city's CRS floodplain management program over the past five years, prepare the city's cycle reverification package based on past performance and meet the activity five-ten credit requirement for category C communities. And also, this is the main part, is to develop a floodplain management plan that we no longer provide to hotels and county. Make a recommendation on possible program enhancements that may result in a higher CSR classification and complete the CRS verification package to be presented to the insurance service office. This all needs to be done and voted on by December third, or people will lose their present fifteen percent reduction. So, as an example, if you have a, if you're paying two thousand dollars for flood insurance in your home, you're entitled to a three hundred dollar reduction. If we do not do this, you will lose that three hundred dollar deduction. If we get an improvement from the class seven to a class six, that three hundred dollar reduction will then decrease to about four hundred dollars. So, this is definitely a beneficial program to the city. This is not something we were aware was going to happen until the county informed us and ISO informed us. We would end up being the only self-insured community that will have our own plan and continue to have these reductions in insurance premiums. This is truly just to the benefits of the residents.
Okay, thank you for your report. Are there any questions from members of the council? Are there any questions from members of the council?
How often does a floodplain management plan have to be updated?
Well, the floodplain management plan, once we have our own, would not have to be updated, but every five years we need to do a cycle verification to the ISO to try to improve our rating.
Okay, so if we're not part of Nassau anymore, this is an extent we probably have to carry that every five years?
Well, not, the bigger portion of this project is the floodplain management plan. If we don't have one, we wrote the coattails of Nassau County on air, Multi Jurisdictional Floodplain Management Plan. So, this will be our own plan, and this will be the one time it has done. So, if we do this again in five years, it's probably going to be in more than the neighborhood of today's numbers of like twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
And can you explain the purpose of the Management Planning Committee?
We, for having a Management Planning Committee, in terms of input, we can have up to eighteen persons on that committee and get credit of eighteen points towards our rating. And it's really just to work with the consultant and oversee the plan so there's a committee made up of staff from the city, from various departments, and from the public.
So, the public will be part of this?
Well, specific people in the public. They recommend somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from the Economic Development Group, somebody from NOAD, which can be COAD here. There's several other categories that we would be taking people from, and that's would be part of the resolution that we need to do tonight to start this, is to start appointing the planning committee. We just put it in as the, not specific people, but whatever you need it from. I've already drafted a letter to send out to the people who are going to request to be on the committee.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the council? All right, seeing none, other questions from the public? It's right here. Linda?
Hi, good evening. Linda Giles, Long Beach, New York. After last week or two weeks of meetings to Miranda, I went to my insurance company, and my policy said I have a five percent reduction. So, I told him that the fifteen percent that you had mentioned, he's more than that. I think you even spoke to him. He's... And then he called me back and he said, "No, that's not happening." So, am I supposed to be getting fifty percent or not?
Everybody in our community, based on our rating system, should have fifteen percent reduction in their flood. And if you don't, you should get another insurance carrier.
Can that message go out to the insurance carriers in Long Beach?
It is sent out to them by the ISO.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your information.
All right, thank you. Liz Trusson?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President. After the, ah, good evening, Liz Trusson, Long Beach. After the last meeting, President Moore asked the Communications Department to let the residents know about the CRS. Did that happen?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah. As I can see on anything, on Facebook as well. The current CRS Coordinator Manual is over six hundred pages. It is not an easy document, and it is based on a point system, as this Miranda just pointed out. In the Series Three Hundred under the Three Thirty Outreach Project, there is a maximum of three hundred and fifty points. The average municipality in the United States gets about eighty-seven points. The Long Beach COAD and their partners do messaging at least weekly, and when FEMA provides an alert, we share this information in timely fashion. FEMA, as I have mentioned a few times up here, is looking at the whole community approach. This will give the city more opportunity for more money. Long Beach may want to consider the floodplain management activities not listed in the CRS Coordinator's manual. We could elevate these activities with their ability to increase public safety, reduce property damage, avoid economic disruption and loss, and of course, protecting our neighbors. In addition, the committee or coordinator can request a review of these activities to determine whether or not they are eligible for the CRS credit, giving us that extra point. One extra point means a big difference. Applying for CRS is extremely time-consuming as well as high incentive. Less than a handful of towns in Nassau have a reduced flood insurance rate. Again, I want to commend our floodplain managers, Scott Kevinz, the building department staff, Joe Correia, D O and his team, on vetting us to our current classification and hoping that the city uses the collaborative efforts of the COAD and the Sandy Advocates to bring our classification to twenty or even twenty-five percent deduction. I ask you to pass this resolution with the addition of the advocates that have been working the last six years on flood reform and many others for prepared issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy. Okay, are there any other questions? Yes. Mr. Riley?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kevin Riley from Long Beach. I plan to speak to you on behalf of the Northeast Bay.
Can you just adjust your mic? Thank you.
And Seth, we'll have that. I think, how do you speak? Not a microphone, most correct. On behalf of the Northeast Bay and Alciddic Association, I would like to thank the council for taking steps necessary to ensure that our current NF5P CRS rating remains intact by creating the floodplain management committee and bringing PetroTech on board with help of the CRS cycle verification and to develop a floodplain management plan. It's immensely important that the city of Long Beach maintain and eventually increase our CRS premium. This critical rating helps to reduce flood insurance premiums for all of our city residents. Flood insurance costs rise at a liberal alarming rate, the CRS rating, and its discount is way too important to put together. It is in this light that I implore the city council to immediately intervene and stop the proposed destruction of the South Nassau Community Hospital's fifteen thousand square foot. This massive commercial complex is proposed to be built in the city's most vulnerable area. This non-accentured doctor's office may put our CRS rating at risk by allowing new developments in the floodplain, impacting stormwater runoff in the area, and permanently changing the way floodwaters move throughout that neighborhood. The bayfront in the northeast section of the city has only minimal protection from coastal life, and it's location, and is the location for a majority of the repetitive loss claims that are impacted. This proposed building will have a massive and everlasting impact on this area and puts the surrounding neighborhood at risk for worse flood. The enormous building's footprint and its accompanying parking area will impact the area's stormwater, stormwater system and create a massive watershed that the hospital's permanent application actually admits they will not be able to contain fault in. Additionally, the proposed structure will be built on a firm to lift the building out of the floodplain and divert its stormwaters around it and into the neighborhood and into the surrounding area. This is a major change to our floodplain. Any development in this property needs to be done in connection with a floodplain management program, program we do not have yet. Once again, I implore the city council to immediately intervene and stop the proposed destruction of South Nassau Community's medical hospital. Has a lot of people here tonight that I hope will be...
Can I stand up in that area?
Okay, well, we'll address that during the Good Welfare, but we're being a bit concerned, and we feel that our next point is addressed a little bit, and the Good Welfare, we need to do it a little bit, but that's fine. They need to hear it from you. It's important that we hear it from the residents.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Item number five. Saying none, we can move forward at this time.
Item six is a resolution granted waiver of Roshi Park and requiring its peruse two seventy-eight West Park Avenue for protein-shaped juice bar and supplement store. Here, you can tell on this item already. Item seven is resolution granted waiver of Roshi Park and requiring its peruse T V West Beach Street for World Center C D related products store here, as we tell on this item already. Moving on to the voting. Okay, item one is bond loaning to authorize financing for improvements to the Park Place Water Shit and Plant, stating the estimated total cost thereof is eight hundred thousand dollars, appropriate set amount. For such purpose, authorizing the issuance of eight hundred thousand dollars bonds to finance said appropriation and the expenditure of city water rate charges up to eight hundred thousand dollars grant funds expected to be received from the state of New York to be expanded towards the cost of said object or purpose for redemption of the city's obligations issued, therefore, or be budgeted as offset to taxes for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds.
Would you just move the option to this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, can I have your time?
Yes.
I think this is an important item to ensure and protect. I want a treatment plan. I really want to thank Senator Truman for his comments, his thoughts, and support on this item. Yes.
Which is what?
Yes.
And two, the bond loaning to authorize financing for replacement of the city's elevated water storage tanks, stating the estimated total cost thereof is nine million two hundred forty thousand five hundred forty dollars. Appropriate to nine million dollars for such purpose, authorizing the issuance of nine million dollar bonds to finance said appropriation of two hundred forty thousand five hundred forty dollars to be appropriated in the future and the expenditure of city water rate charges and up to three million dollar grant funds expected to be received from the state of New York to be expanded towards the cost of said object or purpose or redemption of the city's obligations issued, therefore, or be budgeted as offset to taxes for the payment of the principal and principal of and interest on said bonds.
Would you just move the option to this item?
I will.
Roy?
Yes.
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 Item three is bond loaning to authorize financing for various capital projects in the Portland City of Long Beach, Nassau County of New York, stating the estimated total cost thereof is fifteen million three hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars. Appropriate set amount, therefore, including the expenditure of six million eight hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred forty-one dollars expected to be received in state or federal aid on those issuance of that to exceed fifteen million three hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-one to all bonds and set savings to finance said appropriation. And further authorizing any amounts received to the United States of America and/or the state of New York to be expanded towards the cost of certain, of such capital projects as indicated herein or redemption of any notes and bonds issued, therefore, or to be budgeted as offset to taxes for payments of the principal of and interest on on said notes and bonds.
Would you just move the option to this item?
I will.
Second? Roy, can I have your time?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Commissioner Miranda. You did an excellent job on all three items for bonding. It was a term used man supposedly. I apologize for not having to hear that. I think you did an outstanding job, these difficult things. This is in furtherance of the previous city's full capital plan. There are things in here that definitely need to be done, like equipment for the fire department, the police department. The city can't stand still. We have other issues we have to deal with. This shouldn't be swept up in those issues. So, with that, I vote yes. Yes.
Once again, thank you, Commissioner Miranda, your entire staff, and all of those who are making as possible. We thank you for your leadership with that, I vote yes.
Item four is residential authorization of the Akron City Management and Engineering Contract for complete reconstruction of two-hundred block of East Fulton Street between Monroe Boulevard and Long Beach Road with the lowest responsible bidder and detractor funds.
Would you just move the option to this item?
I will.
I will.
Roy, can I have your time?
Yes.
Yes.
This actual street is in horrendous condition. There are holes everywhere, so I'm sure that the residents will be thrilled to know that change is on the way with that, I vote yes.
Item four is residential authorization of the Akron City Management and Engineering Contract for professional engineering services to assist the city in the community rating system, CRS cycle verification, and develop a floodplain management plan.
Would you just move the option to this item?
Yes.
Yes.
I just, once again, want to say thanks to the LV Code and all the members of the community who are actively involved in helping us in moving forward with this conversation with that, I vote yes.
Item six is a resolution granted waiver of Roshi Park and requiring its peruse two seventy-eight West Park Avenue for protein-shaped juice bar and supplement store.
I will.
Yes.
Welcome to the neighborhood, yes.
We also welcome and congratulate you. Welcome once again, and we know that as you have focused in on health, we hope that you'll also focus in on our environment and that you'll become also a part of our environmentally friendly stores and businesses within the area. We welcome you on that, I vote yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution granted waiver of Roshi Park and requiring its peruse eight eighty West Beach Street for World Center C D related product store.
I will. Yes.
Yeah, welcome to the neighborhood, yes.
Once again, congratulations, and hopefully you will also give environmental friendly feedback. We welcome you. Congratulations with that, I vote yes.
Please, ma'am, if any personnel report has been filed by the city clerk, can we make a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we move into our Good Welfare portion of the meeting. We just want to remind you that civility costs you nothing, which means that you can say things, but it doesn't mean that you need to say things. So, let's always be aware of that, and let's be respectful with respect to what we say. I do want to just give you two updates with respect to Good Welfare. One, during the August sixth meeting, a resident from State Street that was just climbed and inquired about the status of the medical pavilion and the zombie property. I did contact South Nassau and informed that South Nassau is in conversation with a for-profit assisted living cooperation, which may seek to renovate the existing property. It's also important for residents to know that the most recent plan is to build the medical pavilion on a residentially zoned property on State Street, the former plan included the old Long Beach Medical Center property. And so, I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about that a little bit later. And then, during the August twentieth meeting, we were saddened to hear that Helen Frost was unable to secure a bench for her son that was tragically killed during nine eleven. The plaque was ordered and was supposed to be on a second plaque that just fell below the plaque. However, she, at this time, was contacted by our commissioner of public works, John Miranda, who contacted her, she met with him, and she will be notified when the bench arrives. We want to thank Sai Aliyawa and Marie Walsh also for their assistance, and the city is going to cover the cost of that bench. We want to keep it going. On the bottom, and we have Senator Minty?
Good evening, once again. I rise tonight to talk about the payout scandal that has involved this city. Certainly wish I did not have to be here, but we all woke up Saturday morning to the front page of Newsday, which clearly places us... which clearly places us at the in front of the eyes of all of Illinois wondering what happened to our fair city. Now, Iowa City has seen some tough times. Those of us who've been here with families here for a long time remember a struggle through some tough periods coming out of it. But governmentally, you have to say that this is probably the worst or one of the worst periods our city's ever had. And I think that after the draft audit release last week, it's time to address some things and time for you to take action. We now know a few different things, right? I came up here about a year ago and asked that the city conduct an internal investigation and let taxpayers know what had happened. I was hoping my three minutes were up and... So, what has taken place in the interim? Well, we know that no report was put out. And we know that the controller's reports came out saying that the city had wrongfully made payouts that were not authorized and cannot be justified. So, where are we now at this juncture? I'll say a few things. Having the privilege to represent this community and talk to residents every day, whether they're my neighbors or people contacting my office, people are disappointed. But people believe that you can do something and that you can take action now to correct this. They're begging for you to do it. They're waiting for you to put a plan together that is going to do a number of things, both backward looking and forward looking. So, here is what I suggest. Here's what I suggest. And I can't even take credit for these ideas because the district attorney laid it out very clearly in her letter to the city council last week. And here's what has to happen. First, now that we know that payout was made wrongfully, it is incumbent upon you as soon as you can to get the money back. We are sitting here talking about how to fund crucial infrastructure items, debating what we can do, what we can't do. Well, I know where there's six figures waiting for us and it's from payouts that should not have happened. Second, put policies in place to ensure that these things don't happen again. To this day, nothing has changed that a certain payout, like the ones referenced in that report and that are being investigated up and down by multiple authorities, couldn't happen tomorrow. That is a shame. Everyone knows that you should not get a payout for work you did not do, for separation when you still work at the actual place, and for things that your contract does not allow. So, that should be changed immediately. But something even more disturbing and I think more necessary was also mentioned in the district attorney's letter. And that is about cooperation or lack thereof with an ongoing investigation. The letter referenced documents that are missing and a general lack of cooperation, whether it's with witnesses outside of the city, within the city, what have you, was not altogether clear. But all I know is there's nothing to fear from the truth and that it should be this body's job to open up every record, make every witness available, put out every fact possible to let both the authorities and the public know every detail of how this could have happened, why it happened, and what the city has done to make the truth available to anybody who knew it. I will just conclude with this last sentence. The public is waiting for all of you. Please do something.
Okay, well, don't go away. I want to respond. First, we talked about the fact that we need to get this money back. And I think, in writing to Harold, you know that, and also if you were here for the last meeting, you know that I made it clear in terms of I know we speak for the council majority, that we intend to seek restitution. So, we know that ultimately that will take place. In terms of the second issue, this is really something with respect to changing the charter. I think you're also aware of some of the challenges that we've had as council over the past two years. And so, at this time, it requires the majority to move forward to make changes to that charter. And then, we talked about some of the missing documents. We've also actually addressed it on social media as well as the print, that we intend as a council are actively engaged in moving forward with making sure that we have these documents so that we can have the answer. I think also, I think before last year when you came and stood before us asking those questions, some of us here were also asking those questions at that time. And all of us are very frustrated after 16 months. But we can say that at this time, as I said at the beginning of the meeting today, that we have secured legal counsel and we intend to pursue this to the highest level. And I believe that hopefully we come back and that you'll be proud of our outcome. So, thank you very much for being here this evening.
If, look, if there's ever time to put aside the differences coming out of the city's council, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe just for the sake of transparency, you should say what that outside council is?
Sure, no problem with that.
The outside council's law firm of Ingraham Smith. They're going to be reviewing and helping us in this matter.
Hi, Mary Wallace, no, please, thank you, now to the association. I'm here tonight, I don't know if any of you go on Facebook, but I'm here tonight because we need a little more and I've asked for this, for the screening, for the backing out of the streets, for the California rolls down East Pine Street and some of us going right through the signs. But now we have vandalism. In the spring, it starts. Cars being broken into and people not locking their cars and being searched through for items. Now, we have a new game in town. It's like kick the fencing. And five, five were kicked in over this past holiday weekend. In houses, doesn't matter where the property is, these people put these fences up. They were vandalized. And some are on the green cameras. You can hear the voices, but you can't see the faces. And I would just like to say that commercial, it's 11 o'clock, well, at 1 o'clock, where are your kids kicking in someone's fence? It's very distressing. And we need a little more presence. I can tell you that there's not enough down there. I know you all think it's quiet, but we have kids walking from the schools, the middle school, the high school, after activities. And I, listen, nobody wants to see a child locked up and ruin their life. But they should be made responsible and accountable for restitution. I don't care if they go over there and they have to put nails in or whatever it may be. They are responsible for this destruction and it has to stop. And it has to stop with these people rolling through the stop signs. Mr. Miranda's going to help us get the stop cars, whatever they are, as we got the signs. But this vandalism, it starts in the spring. They go through the cars, they steal phones, you know, whatever's in the car of value. And now we've gone to breaking people's fences. They're not cheap. They are not cheap by any stretch of your imagination. And this, listen, we all did silly things. This isn't silly. This is nasty and vicious. And really, the parents need to know, 1:15 in the morning, why is your kid knocking the fence down? Why?
I knew your frustration. Had this already been reported to our police?
The one lady on Clark. And I told her I'd be here tonight. And she did make a police report. There was another on Fulton and Chester. There were two on Barnes Street. And there were a couple more. We're just looking to review it in our city. There are more, it's not just the canal.
Right, sure.
Wherever, it's in the West End too. This is a new game. I mean...
So, if you can kindly just send that, if you can send that to us, we can forward that and we can at least request additional presence in the area because this is a serious situation and it's very costly in terms of the fences. So, we would definitely address that.
Schools are starting tomorrow. We need local police presence, especially in the morning and around 3 o'clock. And I'm not saying it's not some of the residents and Commissioner Bagby will know that some of them get annoyed that they get tickets. Well, you know what? They do the 15 mile per hour. They do it in point lookout. Do it here. These are little children. Some of them walk because their parents work. And their caretakers don't pick them up. And they walk. And you know what? They're in danger. And you want a little bit killing the child? Back and have the one-way street?
Absolutely not. All right, so please send us the information. Thank you very much. Gordon Sanino.
What is that, Ryan? Speech to Long Beach. Uh, anyway, my questions actually might make easier.
Sure. Thank you for coming this evening.
My questions have to do with the South Nassau Community Hospital project. And we have a group of residents in the area that are extremely concerned about what is going on. And my first question is, I'm sure there's a record of the of the length that South Nassau was required to send out to the 250-foot radius, which I didn't reside in. And I didn't get a notification. My next one, they didn't get the notification. So, this appearance of that transparency here on the project. So, my question would be if that can be made public or made accessible, you know, following meeting? I'd like to see if I was on that list. Secondly, we were all wondering why East Bay Drive from Lincoln Franklin has been cordoned off from traffic for the last how many months? That also gives the appearance that South Nassau has been granting that land, which is obviously a public use roadway. And I'd like that question addressed here and now, if possible.
Okay, I'll push her. Not here? Is there anyone else that can answer that question for us?
I can answer the first question. There's a radius count of addresses that are required if you send notices via certified mail. That's maintained by our zoning board secretary. If you'd like to give a call, I just fill out a FOIL form. They will give you access to those records. You can review them. I'm aware that a bunch of neighbors on State Street have retained an attorney and in fact, a matter of this currently in litigation. And we made all that information accessible to that attorney as well.
Okay. And then, lastly, it's just come to my knowledge that the house across the street from it, 702 Franklin, was recently purchased off auction by this large commercial developer. Considering what's going on right across the street from it, there's immediate concern that the precedent that we're allowing, the zoning board allowed by granting this rezon is not going to maybe perhaps, you know, threaten the community with another rezoned residential to commercial property?
I can address that briefly also. I know I spoke with Ms. Wallace Savage at the beginning of the meeting last night and the community and the city association to discuss this in greater detail. And I'd agree to do that. That, the South Nassau lot was not rezoned. They made an argument that a certain legal doctrine...
The doctrine of merger.
Correct, the doctrine of merger should result in their property being grouped together and medical use has traditionally been allowed on that property. It's very different than the use there.
Well, I would ask that, does our local ordinance have a merger of lots provision?
The doctrine of merger is a common law doctrine. It may not take case for... But if I could get to the question here, that was, are we at risk of a precedent? I believe that if there's commercial development in a residentially zoned area, the typical path is they would have to apply for a use variance. That's not what South Nassau did. So, use variance is a very high threshold. Once again, when I come to the city association meeting, I'll be happy to delve into that in greater detail. But for purposes of discussion here today, a use variance is very different than what South Nassau...
Well, can I just answer another question though? Does our local ordinance have a merger of lots provision in the ordinance?
The doctrine of merger is a common law doctrine.
No, 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 that's different than having the our local ordinance, the state charter. Does it have a merger of lots provision?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Lucy Santana.
Good evening. I have several things that I want to say. Number one is, is the city council on its own, is it entertaining other applications for position of city manager to replace Mr. Agassi? Are they doing that now, currently? Because if not, it should be because he's only acting and since he's chosen not to be a resident of Long Beach, that's a violation of our laws. The second thing is, when South Nassau got money from Finland, it was to open up Long Beach Hospital. Now, they chose not to open up Long Beach Hospital. But that, but now, all of a sudden, after they had gotten the money, it's, we're going to put an annex there that we're going to do this and we're going to do that to this building. It is operational. It was cleaned up and ready to be opened when it was said not to open. And it's usable. So, they can use that and give us back our hospital. The other thing, I am ecstatic that we have changed the makeup of our city council. But I am also a little upset at what's going on between East Fulton Street and Pine Street. Because that one stretch, that one little block, is a one-way street going north. However, Head Start is on that corner. Christian Life is on the other corner. We have cab drivers, city employees, customers from Center Med, from, also from the ChemRx and other people that are going south on that part of the street. My daughter lives two doors away from Christian Life. My grandson is autistic. His bus comes down and parks right in front of the house to let him go. And we've got ambulances, fire trucks, taxi cabs and other personnel. Going south on the street, it's only going north. This has to stop. All summer long, they have spent such close encounters with kids on that one stretch. It's ridiculous. There are signs, they put signs up, do not enter. They don't work. Policemen do come in and work on that stretch. And they're on their phones or they're doing something else and cars go right past them and they do nothing. So, I'm asking the city council to do something about this before someone gets hurt. Because if it's my grandson, I'm going to hit him anyway. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm going to invite anybody who is from that line area to come and stand with me. I think that we wanted to kind of show you our numbers, even though we all stood up before.[1722.42] Do you want to join me? And then to have some, some other of the, the group of the speakers.
You know what, we all stand with you. We can all get up.
Thank you.
Well, you may.
Uh June chapter 44 of the State Street. South Nassau Community Hospital did not follow proper procedure in applying for their recent zoning variance in that I am within 150 foot radius of the property in question and I was not served notice in advance or at all of the application to convert or to do the doctrine of merger, which essentially changes the use to a res- from a, from a residential lot to a commercial. South Nassau Community Hospital is not fulfilling the medical needs of Long Beach with its current emergency room that is built to the 100 year flood plan and additionally cannot accommodate cardiac emergencies without transport to Oceanside Emergency Room after taking the money supposedly to reestablish adequate emergency healthcare in Long Beach. Rather, they diverted the majority of the funds to their Oceanside campus in a classic gate and switch move. To add insult to injury, they are now actively trying to destroy a perfectly fine residential area by building offices, not emergency services, in a previously residentially zoned area. Their proposed methods of elevation also leaves much to be desired as they plan to set it on a six-foot earth and firm, further exacerbating the flooding that occurs in that area. Our neighborhood wants to be fully informed of all environmental studies, including flooding, traffic, noise and any other impact that this construction could impose on our quality of life. The zoning board did not consider the legal argument that was presented to them on July 9. It is my feeling that they were instructed to accept the proposal by an entity that is tied, that is tied to South Nassau Community Hospital and benefits from this change of use. What does this for tend for the whole of Long Beach? Is the city for sale? If this happens to one section of the city, it sets a precedent for all of Long Beach. Do you want a commercial development next door to your home? I'm asking the city council to be vigilant in protecting our city and planning responsible development for our future.
Thanks everyone who are coming out tonight and being engaged. We want to encourage you to continue to come out and make your voices heard. Absolutely, it's streaming, so there are people who are watching. Uh it's very important that you do this. I have to say that um I am pretty much two blocks away from where you are. Um and for the past four years, I can say that many of you, uh those who are actually on Franklin or Lincoln have also sent emails to me with respect to the flooding. And uh because I drive through there all the time, even when it's not in a heavy rain, um it's a flood area. Uh and so these are issues that we do absolutely need to address. So thank you so very much for being here this evening. At this time, we're going to ask Nikki Wong, she would take it for you.
Hi, I have a couple of pictures if you would mind. Um these are pictures of what all of us look at every single day, every morning, every night. Um and I did more. I just pulled the Michael's. My name is Nikki Wong, I live at 470 East East Street. First, um I just want to piggyback on what was said there and to Sam Meyer said about the notice. Um I was the only one in the entire platoon who received the notice. The only one. And the only way that I got it is because I read a ad on Facebook on June 25th and I immediately called Robin Lynch and I said, really? This is how the record is of finding out? Okay, that South Nassau submitted an application and she told me to calm down. And she said, don't worry, the letter is coming out June 28th. They're still giving me a lot of time. I have a copy, it was never certified for return receipt. It was in regular mail, I received it July 1st. Next slide. Um second, I would really appreciate it if the city council will make a statement to the public that even though that all the information that was put out there by South Nassau Community Hospital and the city of Long Beach all refer, and during this evening, because it all refers to the former site of the Long Beach Medical Center. And as we all know now, it is not the former site. It is the trailer that I gave you pictures of right along State Street. Um so I appreciate that that could be clarified to the public. Um the other thing that um I would like to ask is um did you both agree with the zoning board's decision to allow South Nassau communities to deal with the medical obstetricity on property that was sold to residential?
The, the zoning board, uh like I said, there's an article said the action has been filed. I believe this was last year pointed, uh you know, as far as I can know is concerns. I'm sure you raise those to your attorney, you'll address those in the appropriate forum.
I do appreciate that, I appreciate that. But I would like to hear from the other city council, we both electing officials. Some of us though.
Well, no, what I was going to say actually was while the zoning board can comment on the topic, the city council isn't the party to that litigation, so.
However, because I'm overseeing five buildings in this city who appointed that council as zoning board. They're, they're all here, they're exceptional. So I think you should get started.
I can't, again, I can't speak for the council. Um many of those who are in the audience, you're aware of the fact that in the past, since 2015, um I've been heavily engaged in the work of each debate uh in terms of speaking out about some of these issues. So uh I'm in a different place, but I will say that I'm taking notes right now in terms of what's happening here. Um I'm not pleased because obviously we've been working really hard to have conversations and being in good relationship with South Nassau. Um and then to find out that some of the things that um have taken place, um it's something that I'm very disappointed to hear in terms of residents not being notified of what was going to take place. I've also had the opportunity to meet with several people who are standing here, but the opportunity, obviously, to walk by there on several occasions. I'm very concerned because it is a residential area and it should remain as such. I'm also concerned because of the fact that a major question was, was asked this evening. And that is, is our city for sale? Uh and that's, that's a question that everyone in this room should be concerned about. Uh because uh we want to have development. Economic development is critical to what we, what we do because obviously we need to change uh and shift from having the burden of taxes on all of you who are the residents. But at the same time, we need to build smart. We also need to build in a way um that we hold, uphold the character of our city. And we do that um without this being a detriment to the residents. Uh and so as far as I'm concerned, I will make sure that this information gets out to uh the community. I think that's the first step. Uh I will also reach out to South Nassau um because I am an elected official, I do represent you. And so all the information that's being shared this evening, I will make sure that I have a meeting with them. And also ask the other fellow councilmen if they're, if they're interested that we could meet with South Nassau to, to get some answers for you. Uh because you still deserve to have some answers. And um I can't give all this because I'm not South Nassau, but I'm going to do everything I can to get those answers for you. Thank you. I don't know if anyone else wants, I don't want to put anyone on the spot tonight. I'm just, I'm speaking for myself. If anyone else want to make a comment, they can make it now. Now I'm going to call Deanne Baker. Alright, at this time, we're going to call Deanne Baker? Deanne Baker? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Hello, Madam President, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. Are you okay?
Yes.
Alright, um I came over here, this is my second meeting I'm attending. I'm becoming very active to what's going on. And um I came before you before discussing the unsafe driving conditions in the area of President Street. Um specifically, I'm speaking of Walnut. And Mr. Bendo had, councilman, had mentioned before that he was, I'm not sure if you were one of the drivers that utilized that street during the morning rush hour in afternoon or if you were one of the long drive doors. I wasn't quite sure.
I do use it some mornings, yes.
Okay, um well, the situation with the unsafe driving conditions during the hours of seven to nine AM in the mornings, Monday through Friday, and the afternoon of four thirty to six thirty have escalated. We have drivers who drive through the stop signs and the board had recommended I contact traffic, which I did. Um and then another gentleman had reached out to me after his last meeting with agenda. He had called me the next day after he presented before you. And we both spoke with Chris of the Public Works. And it was our recommendation between the gentleman and I, you know, with our stop signs, we have national traffic crews replacing all the gas stations. Our streets are torn. And um they're very uneven with all the work that's taking place. Um and people are still speeding down the street as if it's a thruway. So one, we don't have a speed sign posted. I know when you went here into the city, it says the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but people are leaving our city, they're going to work towards Loop. Um so they're not going to see that. Uh the other roadside streets along the President, they have uh signs posted at 15 miles per hour, which I think it would be appropriate if somebody who's a paid employee, I'm, I'm a resident, trying to invoke safety, be proactive in preventing um injury or worst case scenario of fatality. Because it's not to the point where we cannot pull out of our driveways. Just a couple of days ago, I had somebody who came around the corner and wrote about speaking as I was pulling into my driveway. And he's swearing at me that I'm not paying attention, but he's driving at a speed that I would estimate beyond 30 miles an hour and it's unsafe for a resident's street, not thruway. The other suggestion I would make is um at Coolidge, we are proceeding down Walnut and also at Delmont, perhaps having the area surveyed for implementation of stop signs to help slow down traffic because we are a resident. And at those stop signs, even at Roosevelt, they have at Pacific and down at Walnut, where we have the crosswalks, you know, you have the lines, which the people are supposed to stop at before that line and then you have the crosswalk afterward. Out of that line, it's an elevated um stop, which is a very short, um basically speed bump. It's not like the time Pacific. It, they are not to go over that bump and not allow somebody to cross the street safely. I know my timing's up, I'm crazy up here. But we need your suggestions and I, you know, but the clause, I don't think the clause should be passed on to our taxpayers. They should be passed on tickets of the wrong doors who are causing them to act in this manner.
Alright, so um if, if I could just have, um just my chair and just take your information. I'd like to just talk further with you about this. And I'd also like to come see the area. Uh I, I know it visually, but I don't always go through there. And I'd like to actually stand there with you and look at it and take pictures.
One more from home.
Okay, excellent. Alright, so just give me the information. Thank you.
Deanne Baker, if you want my quick to answer to the meeting, I'd like to talk with yours.
Of course, of course. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, and I think this is Front Hill?
Yes.
Good evening, thank you for coming this evening.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Veronica. Um well, I live on the corner of Dalton and Eastchester behind Keating. So I came here tonight, um though I've learned so much from my neighbors. I came here tonight because my fence was one of the fences that I rejected. This is the third time it's happened since I purchased the house in 2014. Now I've grown, uh I've lived a lot of my adult life here. When my son was born, I lived on Maryland Avenue. I lived on Nebraska Street. Um I came home to Long Beach to have my retirement home, my last home. It's a beautiful home. Um I've changed a lot about the home, I've improved the home. I am on a crucial corner of Eastchester, right where Roosevelt stops. That's my house, on the corner. So it's like a, it's like an open target for children. Um children have taken, I'm saying it's children because they're young people, have taken walks from the corner of my property and thrown it into the windows of Key Food and the store on, I mean that's, that's vacant. They've done that already. Um so what I was, what I came here was to see if there's a way to get a camera somewhere there. I am willing to provide the corner of my property um for anything that's necessary to surveil that area in there. Um also, and now that I've been listening so much to my neighbors and to other people on Eastchester and the corner of, I guess it's still Roosevelt, the stop sign is set back, not to meet Dalton, okay? Now Roosevelt comes up to Dalton, but the stop sign is set back. So those people, let's say they're good drivers. They stop at the stop sign on Eastchester and then proceed. In the meantime, people are coming down Dalton. They should stop at the stop sign and proceed. Well, guess why? It doesn't happen like that a lot. It's the street that the children go down when they go to high school every morning and come back every night. It's a meeting area for children because it's right where stores are and it's a commercial spot right on, across the street from my house. It's commercial property, so children meet there. And I mean, I did it when I was a kid, so that's what they do. But there's many times, more than 10, I'd say under 20, kids on bicycles congregating there. I would like to suggest that we also put up signs that say that, just something positive. Maybe they won't act that way. And I would like to be a part of something that promotes this. If there's something I can do to help the city, the neighbors, please let me know.
Okay, and also if you just need your information, your contact information, we'd like to follow up with you.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you.
Good evening, Captain Lee in Long Beach. After living on East State Street in Long Beach for over 45 years, I feel my neighborhood is under siege. The homes have never looked better. My neighbors are at home except for one. In the last few weeks, I discovered South Nassau Community Hospital, which now owns the property that was once the Long Beach Medical Center, is going to build a medical facility directly across from my house. No problem, you might say, isn't that where the old hospital used to be? No. Between my home and the original hospital, it was East State Street, a large parking lot and East State Drive. The proposed building will be practically in my lap. The shocking part of this move is that they plan to build a commercial building on a property that is zoned for one family homes. And the building department rejected their proposal for that reason. No problem, you might say, just bring the case to the zoning board. Well, that's what South Nassau did. And here's the next shocking part. The zoning board granted South Nassau a variance to build in a one-family zone. Never mind that their building will change the character of our neighborhood with noise and traffic plus environmental issues concerning water and sewer use and flooding. But there's more. This morning, I discovered that a house on the next block was sold to a developer of commercial buildings. After they appear before the zoning board, what do you think they have planned for our neighborhood next? And maybe your neighborhood and other neighborhoods. I'm here tonight to ask fellow residents to pay attention. Big disasters start small. A whiff of smoke may lead you to a blazing fire. The first drop of rain may turn into a hurricane. And I'm also here to appeal to the members of the city council for their help. Please save my neighborhood. Thank you.
Just one question for the board, it wasn't asked before. Why is East State Drive being closed?
I mean, I, I'm the attorney for the zoning board, so I, I would know the answer to that question from an operational, you know, perspective. How, how they close the street or why?
Who would, who would know that?
Uh my best guess would be either the building department or the police department. Uh, my best guess would be either the building department or the police department.
Okay, so Long Beach, will you have an answer for the next goodwill fair? I'll get that to our residents. I'm sorry.
Norrie in Long Beach. Um, I have to say, I'm so shocked to see the start of DC sitting here. I already thought he would have tendered his resignation, or it would have been called to, he would have been called to resign. We all know he received improper paths, and has the corporation canceled, and as a county manager, he should have been acting protecting us, and he hasn't. He also has, I assume, gave the go-ahead to hire the asset council, Mr. Capizola? Yes, no? We literally like have a fax guarding the handouts. In regard to his agreement that you're looking for, I have the note that says, where's my phone shut off? Uh, that the full agreement is on file with corporation counsel. And I have a record that I did send it to certain over the council back in September 2018. So it does exist, so I hope that you do get your item on the agenda for the next time. Thank you. Thank you. Next, Maggie Rose.
Before I move on, I'll jump my memory on something. So, Mr. Capizola was engaged supposedly a year or more ago, obviously counsel didn't know about it. Um, I would like to see a copy of the service, Mr. Capizola's service agreement, as well as um the total amount his firm has contained to date. When, when can I have that?
Um, I would have to get his retainer agreement and all the, all the bills addressed.
I can see individual bills, I'll just queue you with some of that.
Okay, um, I could probably provide that two, five days of the week. If I need more time, I'll let you know.
Um, if you can, I'd, I'd like it by Thursday.
Okay.
Additionally, Mr. Capizola responded to the district attorney's letter. Um, the letter was addressed to the council. Mr. Capizola responded on behalf of the city, and that reply was not provided to the council. A, I'd like to know why, and B, I'd like a copy of that response.
Uh, yeah, I can definitely get a copy of the response as, as to why you weren't, I wouldn't know the answer to that question, Mr. Capizola, it's not that bad.
So Mr. Capizola sent that letter without the city's permission?
No, uh, the letter came in and Mr. Capizola felt that there were some, I'd say, inaccurate, mainly that the implication that the city is not cooperating, and very grateful for the DA's office for clarifying that it was cooperating with the investigation.
Did you see the letter before he did was sent out?
Did I see it yet?
Okay, so he was responding to a letter that came to the city council. The city council was not shown a response, why?
I, I, I came into that question, I don't know why.
Aren't you the interface with Mr. Capizola?
Yes.
Then why wasn't the city council shown the response?
Copy that response? If, if the city council was not copy of that response, you'd get that letter.
So how can we be copy of the letters if we weren't even aware that he was actually a part of the process? So I think, the question is, how did the communication break down?
Right, so, so Mr. Capizola was received in the original letter, and the reason why the council, Mr. Capizola was CC'd the original letter from the district attorney, and the reason why the council didn't know of his existence immediately was at the request of the investigatory agencies, they asked us to keep the matter confidential. The reason why the council didn't know of Mr. Capizola's retention originally at the beginning of the investigations, was the investigatory agencies requesting that the investigation may not be that way.
Alright, so that's, only, we'll inquire, we'll have further, we won't move to the stage now, this time. Um, is the Honorable Deesport still here? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
I apologize.
I was enjoying this, so. I was learning something that probably answers from person. Do you think counsel, like Lori, Long Beach? You answered one question I had. Uh, is there legal counsel advising the city council in addition to Capizola? It was mentioned the Ingraham Smith Law Firm. Um, what is their objective and their role in the council? Is it to advise, in other words, you're having advisory, legal opinions to give you advice on, A, how to collect overpayments, and B, uh, internally?
Have that.
Okay, I, I move on from that question. I am very happy that you have gotten legal counsel, by the way. Uh, Councilman Mandell is a attorney, and uh, I think you really need it. Um, have leads been initiated against property of people who have just been determined to be overpaid to protect the taxpayer of the city of Long Beach? Have wages been garnished by those who have been overpaid? I'm going to ask a series of questions. Um, when John Bendo, Councilman John Bendo announced it, it's April 2, 2018, the people who separated from the bond are still working, what action was taken uh by the, by the city? I've given a question, these are my notes. It, it appears that a bunch of Long Beach residents actually did research to bring this matter to the attention of authorities. And I'm going to, correct me if I'm wrong, on a bunch of these items. Um, Mr. Mandell, did you accompany outside counsel? Mr. Aramo, did you, he's not here, I can't ask him at this time, but did you accompany outside counsel? The outside counsel meeting, Mr. Capizola? Or have you been advised by Mr. Capizola? I just have one, two more, if you don't mind. And please answer what you can, and I understand if you can't. We now know that press reports that outside counsel has been effectively defending the payouts, and has been in place for some time. Who is, or who has the authority to sign checks on behalf of the city? Is it only the controller? Are you, are you the sole authority to sign checks? And who else is? Is who? I don't know, who is the city treasurer?
He's waiting his name in the background.
Oh, Mr. Fraser, sorry, you're the city treasurer, okay. Have any of the 10 people who are being looked at, is anyone of the, a former city controller? I guess my time's up.
Since you addressed me directly, actually, I'm kind of confused why you addressed me and the other councilmembers, I'm assuming those have the same questions to the venue running me, but let me answer your question.
Well, I only addressed Councilman Mandell, Councilman Diamond, Paul, Charities, Aramo and I do.
You asked me specifically, and only me, and I was not being able to answer. First, as to please speak, you know, which individuals are being investigated? I couldn't speculate, because I don't do an investigation. My interaction, I was contacted by the Nassau County DA months ago. I did not have counsel accompany me, nor did I have counsel contact me. Um, more recently, I was advised by our corporation counsel that other agencies had contacted corporation counsel and wanted to also speak with me. At that point, and this was recently, I was advised that the city had an attorney, um, from a federal prosecutor, whom I could speak with. Spoke with him briefly, um, I can't, that holds for some substance what he said, but as an attorney, it wasn't anything shocking to me. Um, I spoke with the agencies via telephone. I believe he was on the call, he did not advise me, he did not guide me, he did not represent him. I voluntarily spoke with these agencies, because that's the right thing to do. But I did not have counsel, but they're considered in my council.
Understood.
And that's when I first learned of his existence, let alone his connection with the city. If you want to ask my fellow councilmembers, I'm sure they'd want to respond as well, and not just from you.
Right, thank you, Councilman Mandell, would that be consistent, would this side have, would that be consistent, your understanding?
Mr. Mandell does not speak for me, but I'm not going to discuss my interaction with federal or state agencies, conducting an investigation, and as far as I know, it's still ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Um, my last question, I think. Is any of the, of the 10 people mentioned in this multiple articles, has, is anyone of those a former city controller?
Yes.
None of the 10 people?
No, I just, uh, maybe I'll just make it, instead of the news, the press release, the uh, a draft order delivered to the city last week said the 10 employees, including former city manager, received separation payments.
My understanding is exactly the same that you have, that's my understanding.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
That's a lot of the problem. We don't know what documents they're talking about, we don't know what individuals they're referring to, we don't know which 10 individuals they're representing.
Oh, okay.
Actually, go ahead and review for.
Correct.
I'll be tying this up, but um, but that's, we can echo this thing, so.
So we're both up to the same speed.
Yes.
Maybe you want to be?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Councilman Mandell, you have any comments?
Uh, I'll just say that I decline the offer of the attorney. Um, I did not think it was appropriate to have an attorney that represents the city uh in a discussion, because that attorney then turned to go back and report back to the city anything that I discussed with the, with the authorities that I spoke with. I didn't think it was appropriate, so I declined.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, is the Honorable Deesport still here? Okay, alright, we thank you for making the attempt, Irene Hesse.
And just one additional, Mr. Delory, and that's also when I found out about the existence of Mr. Capizola.
Thank you, Councilman Mandell.
Irene Hesse. The city organization sure has at the top of it the city council, I believe. So anything that goes on should go through the city council. That, that is the city, that's who we voted for, that's who we elected, and how corporation counsel can hire somebody to represent the city and not tell the city council is just beyond belief. Um, there is a game being played here by the Rainy Ducks. Miss Diamond, you did not show up for two and a half sessions, now Anthony is missing. It is very odd how that's going on. You lost the primary election, and you don't show up for meetings anymore. You sit there like, you're not involved, and I guess you're not. But if you're not, then quit and leave, because you are not helping the city. We need to be, we need to be conversational, okay? Um, I believe, uh, and so when I mentioned that, the Newsday thing, uh, about the water prices, you said that somebody should write a letter in response to that? And I missed the comment, I think maybe, Mr. Calnisky, did you say that there was something that worked? Or did somebody say that? No, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something.
No, it's actually a PR, uh, party.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just going to remind you. The article was in Newsday three weeks ago, so if he needs help writing the letter, I'd be happy to help out.
Send them the correctional there.
I also, um.
The clarification, so there was a correction sent that, that I did with it, thank you.
With all the people here about the hospital from East State Street, I just want to remind all of us that the hospital affects all of us, all of us, not just a neighborhood thing, that one particular item in the neighborhood too. But the hospital affects all of us, and the mess that South Nassau is doing to us is wrong. Uh, and then I think this is finally, Mr. Agastis, DC, several months ago, I asked you about looking into um former and current city employees who were allowing their children to go to the daycare center on Magnolia and not paying their bills, they owe a lot more. I think the number was seven, 7,000, I don't remember, but after I brought it up, you said you didn't look into it, and I brought it up again, and you said you were busy with, I think, the budget, and you would look into it after that. So I'm bringing it up again several months later, have you looked into it?
Yes, I remember, I'm good today.
Okay, so we'll make sure that we have enough, the information for you at the next goodwill fair. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Liz Preston.
Thanks very much, I think, Liz Preston, Long Beach. Hang on one second. Um, I just just want to take one moment, if we also, just pause for those that are in the path of Delory and the Bahamian. Thank you. I also want to just go back to the question that I, that this may be repetitive, because we're wanting to spend time on that. But I do want to get down. I wanted to go back to the questions that I emailed, I read aloud, and once again, request clarity on the hiring of this outside counsel, both separation payout of the non-separated employees, as well as those that actually left. I and others that asked for information on this outside counsel, and I just, uh, learned with his name in the last week, have gotten incomplete and unclear answers. In May 2018, Senator Aramo rejected Senator Klinsky's call for the independent investigation. He said it would be a waste of money. Look where we are now. Then the city attorney, Mr. Klinsky, has been defending the, defending the payouts in the press since May of 2018. So is the city taking the position of defending the payout and not protecting the taxpayers? Much better than I can plainly spoken as I can. Who authorized retention of the outside counsel?
Um, I'm going to be very clear about what the city's position was with respect to all the investigations, and it's providing as much truthful and accurate information to whatever investigatory agencies exist, um, and are asking for that information. I'm very grateful to DA, to DA's office for clarifying that the city has been cooperating, okay? And, and we are here not to take a position on anything, we are here to cooperate and let the agencies do their job, and I'll have no further comments after that.
Thank you. So let me just end then, because I think it's unfair that you have to ask these questions constantly when they are not answered previously, and that the taxpayers have to pay for attorney fees for alleged wrongdoing on some of the employees hired by city managers. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time, for best to the city.
Thank you.
Karen McKinnis, 102 Pennsylvania Avenue. I have one comment regarding something that was said earlier, and then three questions. So my first comment is that with respect to the beach revenue from year-to-date September 2nd, which is 4.322 million, I respectfully suggest that in the future, you provide contacts to that number by including a comparison to the year-to-date budget and comparing it to last year. Stating a number by itself is a number in a vacuum.
Can you just pass this to her? Um, I just gave the information just for transparency, you can have the entire sheet, which actually has a comparison, and uh, in time, in the future, I will actually do that, I was just giving the information out, but thanks for pointing this out.
Thank you. So my first question, have we hired an auditor for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019? And if so, please don't, please don't tell me it's the same auditor we've been using for the past few years. My second question, has the city council number? My second question, has the city council member received any financial reports for the current fiscal year? And if so, what? My third question, in an off-site meeting with President Moore and Vice President Bendo and other among each president's present this past January or February, I informed everyone at that meeting that the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a professional association of approximately 19,000 state, provincial, and local government finance officers in the U.S. and Canada, that they recommend that municipalities establish an audit committee. The audit committee is to be made up of elected officials and others not directly involved in the accounting process of the city. These committee members would work directly with the auditors and be able to ask questions and get updates on the audit directly from the auditors. Has that been done yet? And if not, why?
So I can answer that question because during the budget period, and when I gave my speech before making the vote, I actually called for an audit committee, and nothing has happened since that time. Obviously, we're moving forward now because things have shifted. I don't want to promise this will happen between now and November, but I did actually call for it at the time, and so as we continue to move forward with all the pressing issues, that is one of the issues, because obviously, budget reform and fiscal health is a priority for us. Okay, can someone speak to the hiring of the auditor?
I haven't signed the petition on this issue.
Can the council members please decide together who the auditor should be for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019?
I think.
Please.
Yeah, I have no problem with it, sharing that information, but I believe that's going to be spearheaded by our, we're controlling that process as well.
Right, you know, I really don't trust the current auditor, because it's not getting those contracts, and it's a mistake number one. Am I, am I your second question?
I'll take that one, because that's been my fifth issue. No, haven't received any financial reports, which thank you for talking to my member again. Ms. Pressman, I assume you read the comptroller's draft report. This was also an issue in there. It's also in the city charter of co-credences, so effective immediately, we expect that you will provide monthly financial reports to the council on the city's status. I would also like to see a budget versus actual report for the FY 19 budget. If you can tell us how long you need to do that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, while she's coming forward, I just want to remind all the members of the council, this is an issue, because we do have a new comptroller, and we are moving forward, that we can actually email and CC each other so that we have this information, we have it on record, and we need to document everything that's being requested, so that we can all hold each other accountable. And with that.
Okay, sure. So the fiscal year 2019, can I have a little clearer? Yeah. This year, 2019, that ended on June 30th, 2019, has not been closed by the comptroller's office, and the reason, it's a natural process, it takes any kind of interpretation to walk through the period where you have to keep the year open, because we still are receiving invoices that need to be paid and applied towards previous fiscal year. That being said, I'd be more than happy to provide budget to actual and financial statements, but not clear that that's the requirement. I can put it in my communication.
All right, and we look forward to having that information also during our open session, which will be held on September 24th. Thank you.
My time's not up, I can carry on.
We answered a few questions, so just follow along.
Okay.
Okay, go for it.
Has the council received cash flow reports yet? And then, if the, if the city council had been given financial reports on a regular basis, they would have been intimate with the budget, and they would have realized that outside council on this, on the payout matter would have, would have transpired. So we are not helping our city, our elected city council members by not giving them financial reports, which I've been asked before for about 18 months. Mr. Bendo?
Look, I'm just gonna keep this generic. The draft report that we received was very eye-opening to members of the council. You are going to see, I believe, at least a majority of the council act in a very different way going forward. We can't talk about that too much at this point, but things can't continue the way they were, and we're beginning to take steps.
And hopefully, this will remind you that was the whole purpose of moving forward with the platform, so that everyone here would have access to the report, and we are actively engaged in that work. Elizabeth Cantwell.
I just wanted to address something that's come up several times at council meetings. I get to this summer, I'm happy to share each of our boardwalks are crowded, but I've been noticing some very troubling safety issues, and we used to fight lanes this year. At the last city council meeting, Mr. Moran said that he felt the problem of bikers using boardwalks as speedway. That's probably part of the problem. I also see electric bike, skateboards, electric scooters, dogs, baby strollers, people, and it's not safe a lot of times up there. I use boardwalk bike lanes a lot. Previous meetings, and from the candidates for the city council, said talk about being here, citizen committee, looking for concerns like this. I wanted to put that out there as a solution tonight to the issue. The boardwalk bike lanes come up a lot at council meetings. For example, the last council meeting, Mr. Moran said he tested some type of heat but washed off. We had a committee, we could reach out to other town to find out what they're doing, how they're setting things up, what they have that's working. We could also look for our own experience. I noticed over the summer, one evening, two of our specials, summer specials, were on the boardwalk in the bike lanes, and they were very friendly, and they were telling people, hey, this is a bike lane, where you walk. I only saw that once this summer, and we had, the specials were up on the boardwalk all summer long, and every sudden interacting with people, and they were there. And this one time, it was really a pleasure, people were walking, it was all very, it felt very safe. I'd like to see us use that instead of, and be a little more creative, to just like put signs up. They're good for litigation, I'm sure, having signs says, don't walk, don't ride, don't whatever. I do have a friend who was on the boardwalk in the bike lane, she was on a bike, and she swerved to avoid somebody walking in there, and she messed her shoulder up on the side and said, this is only a bike lane. So I think we're kind of really encompassing, like we're very, kind of, it's an active area, we're taking on a path of approaches to try and make it safer for people. So I just want to suggest that moving forward, because things are changing, how we do things, that the council just take advantage of the positive energy and the experience of people in this camp, and look to establish committees who would be interested in trying to find opportunities.
And thank you, and also, obviously, this bike, the bike lanes and bike safety, this is an unresolved issue, been going on for some time, and this is still a priority for us. So again, I made note in terms of having some kind of committee from members of the community, because I think civic engagement is key if we're going to put the city forward, and so if we can get more of our residents involved, they can provide more feedback, I think it's always helpful for us, because there are things that some people may or may not see, and so it's always good to have other viewpoints and other perspectives. So thank you so much for sharing that with us this evening, and we hope it will come back again. James Todd.
Good evening, Madam Chair, to the council. Thank you for the opportunity of always being able to address the city, James Todd, on East Street. I just wanted to, again, thank the city as we continue moving forward. I would like to thank our diversity in our city. Sometimes, old diversity is not celebrated, but I am honored to, that the history of the city, I mean, with the first African-American city council person now being the president, and it, it should be celebrated. Everybody's history is celebrated, even though some things may have never been done, but you looking to take an oath in front of the presidents that have elected you and not have elected you, to take an extra oath, I think it's honorable for you to commit to doing your best on behalf of the people. So, again, on Thursday, at 6:30, the city is going to celebrate the history. A lot of us don't celebrate the history. The first African-American in Long Beach was King Vincent. It was the first African-American police officer, some people may not know. The first African-American from a fireman in Long Island was Charlie Hassett. Many people may not know. The first African-American in New York State to win five, Nassau County to win five state championships was Jecor, a team from Long Beach. So Long Beach, the first African-American animal warden in the history of Long Beach was who? Actually, myself. So, but many of you may not know that, even though I've been fired by Republicans and fired by the Democrats, I still have 23 years with this great city. And even though I'm the first animal warden to ever take a test in the history of animal wardens, and I got the highest on the test, thank God. So, and, 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 and I look at that history, because sometimes history is just deleted. And I say, I went to school for animals, I went to motor college, body college, I went to trade school for, you know, animals, and then just because I had a sign in my yard that some didn't like, or else I voiced my opinion of the city council meeting, I was fired both times. I was framed, I went through a lot of stuff, and I can write a book. Robert knows me well, and with friends, even though he had to be the attorney to fire me, but I won my job back twice. Not to say that you're not a great attorney, because you are, but I just, Fred, going to one, you know? And, and, and we just had to prove the point that I was fired for political reasons. You know, I'm a perfect man, you know, I'm not. But again, so I thank God for the history that we celebrated on Thursday, looking for the whole city to come out as we celebrate the first African-American president of the city of Long Beach since it's been incorporated in 1922. Again, God bless, peace to everyone. Let us continue to pray for our city and those that are in the area.
Thank you. All right, I just wanted to mention Barbara Wolf.
Good evening, thank you for coming this evening. Good evening, it's been a long time. What you have is the long version, I'm reading the grid version, because that's one of three minutes. Okay, Barbara Moscow, 25 and left two, Long Beach. In May 2018, this council passed a resolution to request the New York State Financial Restructuring Board to provide us a comprehensive review report. We received this report in June, this June. The report's purpose is to make recommendations for improving our financial stability and delivery of the public, of public services. My suggestion is making review of the comprehensive review report mandatory, mandatory reading for all. You can get this on the city's website, the entire 41-page report is there. The International Association of Chiefs of Police modeled calls for 35 full-time patrol officers. We have 48 full-time patrol officers, and an average salary of $165,000 a year, which is the highest of all cities in New York State, at a cost of $2.2 million plus fringe. The recommendation from the FRB is that Long Beach should consider resizing the police department. Long Beach has 341 full-time police, or one-third are police and fire, totaling 17.2 million expenditures. Police and fire do not contribute to their health insurance cost, but police and fire constitute 30% of the city's gross, gross, excuse me, gross health insurance. The FRB recommendation is that the city should seek labor and healthcare efficiencies. Grants may be available. The report has many recommendations about the Magnolia daycare facility, municipally-owned, municipal-owned and operated daycare centers are largely uncommon across New York State. The recommendation is the city could lease the center to a nonprofit organization, and the city would continue receiving the benefits of the center, plus earning rental income from lease. No worry, not too many, though. Employee timekeeping, to this day, is carried out on paper. The FRB recommends bringing this function into the 21st century. The FRB summarizes municipal services and functions shared by the town events and Nassau County. The only function not shared is our paid fire department. Long Beach spends an average salary of $144,000 a year per firefighter, which is second highest in New York State. The Celia Young Earth is the highest, is the highest. We have 16 firefighters that cost 2.3 million plus, plus fringe. I'm wondering if I can continue my 11-point?
Okay, yeah, continue your final point.
Okay. My opinion is that the, that the council consult with Garden City, which recently terminated paid fire section. Our initial cost would be high, but in the long run, our, our taxpayers would benefit, and there are 150 firefighters. The city of Long Beach pays annual headquarters tax to Nassau County Police Department, which gives us services for EMS, sex crimes, robbery, homicide, narcotics, target range, mounted units, et cetera. It appears Long Beach PD dupe pays many of these headquarters tax services. The opinion is, or my opinion, is to conduct a detailed study of expenditures and services of the LEBG. What is the patrol tax Nassau County would charge us? And should Long Beach Police Department be part of Nassau County's inward district? Specials, parking attendants auxiliary, can use the space at City Hall Station, at City Hall, the station house, and the auxiliary police house on Park Avenue near Maple can be sold. Police and civilians will not be terminated at all, but rather transferred to other precincts. Perhaps criminal justice PhD candidates can be offered this as a thesis topic in addition for the opinions of the financial planning firm we recently hired. Respectfully submitted by me.
First, thank you for taking the time to prepare this document. This is not going to be the end of this conversation. Our commissioner is not here, and so that means that for the next meeting, we hope to have some answers by that time. In the meantime, we will definitely make sure that we can provide some follow-up to all of the issues that you raised, because it's, again, as a resident, as a taxpayer, it's our, it's our responsibility to make sure that we can address some of the issues that you've covered tonight.
I appreciate that.
So thank you for taking the time, and we'll make sure that we have some answers.
Thank you. The 21-page report, yes, online, is excellent, and I hope you will read it, I'm sure you have, and I hope all the residents will read it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr..
Just a few questions in common, as Laszlo reported in the past. First, regards to East State Street. I recall being at a meeting with the now-President Moore regarding the Department of New York City trying to figure out what we needed here. Those types of meetings were very engaging, they were great, but I asked that now the one hundred new leadership of the administration that would follow up with similar type of events compared to during the whole alternative use concept proposals that were being made by the city. It was not much more than just saying, all right, well, at South Nassau, they'll host a public meeting, and that was pretty much it. So I do ask that the council, specifically, and the administration, work with the State Street residents in the area near the canal, because they have great points, and it really shouldn't be on them to try to bridge the gap, it should be the city to go to South Nassau and say, let's have a work session together. So I ask if you guys can do that, because they have very valid points. So I ask if you guys can do that, because they have very valid points, and it's really the role of the elected officials to help with that. I'm also willing to be a part of that as well.
We do, if we can. Obviously, I've already had the opportunity to meet with some of the members from State Street, those are my neighbors, but we can do something official.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. They're working really hard, they have some really great points, so I just hope we can build on that together. With South Nassau as well, because they are the people that are going to be providing medical care. Another question is, speaking of consultants, is the city still retaining that public relations crisis management company? And if they aren't anymore, why did it stop, and when did it stop?
You just referred to the PR firm that you referenced several months ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Can anyone speak to why they were terminated? It's my understanding that you no longer have that firm.
Would be nice if it wasn't in headlines, it was a topic of discussion, that they were retained and it wasn't really well-known. So if they aren't here anymore, it would be good to also bring up. And lastly, even though it was asked by maybe my counterpart specifically, with some answer in that some things can't be responded to, can we just know, who is this Mr. Capazolo working for, and what is his role? That's plain and simple, is he working to help in assisting in the investigation? For what purpose? I mean, a lot of things were said in the headlines, so I know I probably can answer this, but a lot of people said in headlines in these papers, there's a back and forth, and a lot of us in the crowd are still very confused. What is he actually here doing?
Mr. Capazolo represents the city of Long Beach with respect to the separation of investigations. As I said, the intended, intended purpose is to facilitate the flow of information and provide as much truthful and accurate information to those agencies as possible, and his goal is cooperation. Like I said, beyond that, generally come.
So, okay, it just makes, doesn't make much sense to me. Well, that makes sense, but it doesn't make sense if the city council would have kept it out of the loop on that, considering they were part of the separation payments.
As I said before, when the investigations began, those investigatory agencies requested that we keep it confidential, and we did.
And that's the reason why it's nice to me, when we asked if there was someone retained, the answer is, "We don't have one."
I was the interface with the council, I was not present at those meetings, I don't know what was said at those meetings. I'm telling you right now that he was retained at the beginning of this investigation, I already said this stage of purpose.
Do we, do we know if he's actually also representing helping the ease and facilitation of conversation or whatever your information flow for the now no longer employed city, former city employees?
Mr. Capazolo has nothing to do with any former employees.
Okay, good to know. Last thing, I know there was a personnel memo put out by the majority of the council a few weeks ago, regards to changes, and it should be cleared through them. I would make a strong recommendation that all consultants that are hired by the city also be facilitated through the council. I mean, I may need a change in the charter for making the council approve it. I know that Corporation Council can hire attorneys, I know the city manager's office can hire consultants, I know, but now it looks like in some cases we're hiring engineers, and it has to go in front of the council. But in cases like the ICMA, or these lawyers, or this public relations company, it kind of goes unknown first, and then, hey, guess what, we've got these people, because people in the community foils their records, and now we have to help too. So just to make a recommendation, that the council also put a memorandum out there, as confirmed by legal, that all consulting services are now cleared through the council as well, or at least made aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Dussler.
Hello, good evening, Jake. I'm sorry, I already asked you a whole many questions that are kind until I have to speak. We're going to hi- Mr. Capazolo. Clearly was authorized by somebody. Mr. Agostese denies it, or council office denies it. Nobody seems to know who hired him, but yet, this guy is working for our city, he must be working pursuant to a contract. Somebody's signature is on that contract. Is it a matter of national security for the city to disclose to us who signed Mr. Capazolo's contract? Second is, what is the rationale for it? Nobody here seems to be willing to say, Mr. Calvinski, that his explanation is nonsense. But that's exactly what his explanation is. If the city, as the victim of this crime, and I do believe it's crime, was offering its full cooperation to the DA, or the feds, or whoever else might be checking into things, why on earth would we, well, now I'm a lawyer, to further that cooperation? What's the lawyer going to do? Is he going to fulfill lawyer requests on, 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 or request for information on the avenue of agency? No. That's a nonsense excuse. And of course, the cost, which I don't know why Mr. Calvinski can't respond to Mr. Bendo's request, of course, Mr. Capazolo's hiring in a timely fashion, that information that is stringing fits. So a suggestion that it might take beyond this week is, quite frankly, incredible. Moving on to the council's decision to retain outside counsel. A recommendation that I believe I made to you guys several weeks ago, I'm covering to see if you're finding getting around to doing it. However, I do have some questions about the structure of that recommendation. Specifically, who it is? How he or she was chosen? Do we have a retainer with them? By whom was that retainer assigned? Because it is my understanding the council does not have the power to contract directly that any person hired by the council or otherwise must ultimately be authorized and go through the city manager's office. So the concern that I have, is the concern that I've always had, which is that the council is still in the mercy of Mr. Agostese in terms of the quality of any legal information that it gets. And I'd like to hear the council explain how it was able to circumvent Mr. Agostese and obtain counsel for itself. I'd also, moving on to the comment on the $500,000 favor being bandied about in the news day story, I think was mentioned by yourself today, Miss Moore. That $500,000 favor that they were talking about, that has certainly indisputably been overpaid to city workers, that covers one fiscal year. Depending upon which version of things you listen to, this has even been going on since at least 2012, and perhaps going back as far as 2007. The $500,000 is the tip of the iceberg. There is substantially more money that is potentially available to clawback, assuming that those payments were made based upon the same policy and the same application of that policy to pass retirees. And I'm going to move on to my now-familiar topic and say, how does the council sit here and allow?
Summarize it nicely. Go ahead. Summarize it nicely.
How does the council sit here and allow the acting city manager to defy you, his bosses, and get away with it? Not just tonight, but many times, and for a very long time. There's a special meeting scheduled for this Thursday. I ask the council to add that to the agenda of that meeting, and that I call for removal of Mr. Agostese from the position of acting city manager. If that is not possible, I ask that the council convene a special meeting at the earliest possible time for the purpose of removing Mr. Agostese. Mr. Agostese has gone so far as to secretly hire a lawyer at prayer expense to help him, and you're worried this morning, his co-experience to cover up their wrongdoing. Mr. Agostese has compounded this by directly concealing the hiring of this lawyer from the council and the public, and he has further enlisted his subordinates in Corporation Council Office to aid in concealing the hiring of this lawyer from the public and the council. In any place but Long Beach, this kind of insubordination gets you fired on the spot. But yet, I'm still looking at Mr. Agostese sitting in this chair. The council should be embarrassed or as failure to look out for the taxpayers by firing Mr. Agostese a long time ago. You leave the residents with no choice but to try to fire you when the opportunity presents itself in October. How a guy who is conspiring to obstruct justice can continue to sit as our city manager is disgraceful.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. You have, you, it's my turn. Thank you very much. I'm just going to say this one, the acting city manager was informed in terms of us moving forward with outside counsel. Again, just because we may disagree, we still have to work together as a team, and we do things in a respectful way. It was all done above board, it's not a secret. And so we do have, we have moved forward with obtaining outside counsel. That's number one. Number two, in terms of questions about moving forward or taking action, any action that the council takes at this time, we have to take action, and I made it clear in my statement earlier today. We're not going to just take an action based on whim, based on emotion. We're going to do everything that we do here because we want to protect the residents. And that means that if I just jump up and say, "I'm going to do this right now," why would you want that from us? You wouldn't want a sort of excellence, because then that would cost you money down the line. I don't want you to have to pay any more taxes than what you're paying right now, you and everybody else in this room. That means that we're responsible for you, or we need to protect you. Now, it's unfortunate that for the past 25 years, according to this report, that some of that protection was not happening. And as we felt, there are rising costs here, people are being outpriced, the community is changing, right? And people said early, "The city's for sale," because we failed in that. But what we're telling you tonight is that we're going to do this the right way. And because we're going to do this the right way, we're going to do it in such a way that when the outcome happens, you're not going to have to pay another dollar out of your pockets because we didn't file the right paper, or we didn't do the right thing. Everything needs to be done above board, everything needs to be transparent, and everything needs to be done smart and calculated, so that everyone in this city can feel safe and feel protected. And that's my promise to you, has nothing to do with October, because you said October, or November. This is my responsibility right now, and this is why we're here tonight. Even after 10:00 PM, we're here, because we're dedicated to anyone that's in this rescue. Okay? And so you will have other information, but for tonight, I'm going to call John Dean. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Dean, Long Beach, thank you. I just wanted to remind people, I was forward to the lady in the East End talking about the traffic problem that happened there. That doesn't mean that the traffic problem on both markets ever disappeared. One of the worst levels that I've ever had in, in the, in 1969, this is worse east than we were with, than we were with just the southern community. Incredible, the kids, the wolf was, was born, came to the tournament, without listening to light, light, the pot. We have to do something, I know already, for Nassau County, but in the meantime, Long Beach, both West and Rock Street, Nassau County doesn't know, we do. We can take action. And then, I'm working for a lot. I've seen a number of the benches, not many women, but, and I call it damage. I know that we have cameras up there now, I hope that those cameras are being used to follow people and are damaging our property.
Is during the last meeting, I believe we did share that we're moving forward with respect to the bench repairs, all right? And so that's going to be ongoing. Now that the season is over, you're going to see a lot, you'll see.
Just in respect to a couple things that I'll talk to you. I would say that any kind of specialty hiring should go through. As far as the OI, one shock that we don't have a preliminary report from 2019, that of course, as a place for justice, it needs to be verified when all the big work is there. We should know, even though the books aren't closed, we should know a really good whole mark fair for 2019. We should be, if the auditor just verifies that it's active, or that we're doing a job diligently, we should have, in this age of technology, it should be produced a day after the officially approved. And I hope that Thursday is a great day here for celebration.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Our last speaker this evening, Megan Stutter?
Stutter.
Okay, so that concludes our meeting for tonight. I want to thank you for your patience, and I hope that you all get home safely. And we'll see you.